Tonight, just two things. Uh, one is that um. At the end of last month, we received the resignation from member Scott Brown. Um, Scott's been on the school committee for over eight years. Um, played a very active role in the legal affairs subcommittee. And I just want to pass along our sincere thanks for all of his work. And um, wish him well as uh. Uh, this um, as he continues to move forward and 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 take a step back from this committee. Um, second, just an observation that it's certainly nice to see buses rolling um in our neighborhoods again. Um, it's uh, it's, it's nice that in some ways it's coinciding with some signs of spring and um, there's a feeling that we're getting there. So just wanted to point out that observation. Um, want to take without objection, a couple of things in a slightly different order tonight. What I'd like to do is uh, move to our motion on collective bargaining, uh, followed by the students' report. Uh, then a discussion on the regional agreement and then into the superintendent's report. So without objection, I'd like to um entertain a motion uh, to ratify the memorandum of agreement COVID-19 plan for school year 2021. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one between W R S D and the Waukesha Regional Education Association.
Move.
Second.
Moving seconded, Randy, can we call the roll for that?
Member Ayla.
Ayla, yes.
Member Gustafson.
Yes.
Haber.
Haber, yes.
Member member Imber.
Imber, yes.
Member Kirshenbaum.
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton.
Knowlton, yes.
Member Longbulleal.
Longbulleal, yes.
Member Mills.
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell.
Mitchell, yes.
Member Otmar.
Otmar, yes.
Member Pantos.
Panto abstain.
Member Shapiro.
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva.
Silva, yes.
Member Smith. Member Smith. Member Sullivan.
Sullivan, yes.
Member Williamson.
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland.
Woodland, yeah.
Member Young.
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis.
Dennis, yes. That motion carries. Uh, next item, we'd like to open it up to our student representatives. Kate and Kanichi.
Kanichi, do you have anything to start?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, I can start then. Um, so an update from the middle schools. Middle school clubs did start this week, um, or last week, I guess. Um, so we had the art club meet and then um, the diversity social justice club. I got to pop into both those meets for a little bit. They were both going fantastic. Um, they did some get to know you activities, um, and then some smaller discussions and activities um, to kick those clubs off. Community service club starts tomorrow, um, and I know I've been getting a few emails about sports club. Um, we have one more meeting to finalize everything this week, but students should be connected with advisors um, this week. And they should, the club should be beginning the week after April break, so the week of the twenty-sixth, I believe that is. Um, one note from the Desi Student Advisory Council, they're looking for student input on the academic excellence plan, which is going to be Desi's guide to a post pandemic recovery. Um, and they're basically looking for a group of high school students. Um, any high school student in the state is welcome to register um, to come this Thursday at four thirty. It's about an hour. They're gonna ask some guiding questions um, to prompt some discussion on that academic excellence plan and to get student feedback on that. So any high school seniors, um, the link to register for that, or not, just not seniors, but any high schoolers, the link to register. Every that is in the student representative um, Instagram and on the Facebook page. And anyone interested is welcome to email me. Um, student council is planning a second spirit week for the week of the twenty-sixth. Um, spring sports are going to begin the week after April break and the register, the deadline to register is this Friday. Um, our school play rehearsal was um, this past week and students are getting ready for that. Um, I believe it's going to be a movie this year, um, because obviously it's more difficult to do that in person. Um, but they're performing the Matter Girl. Um, this week, the diversity inclusion club held a playbook workshop, which Dr. McCall um, got to join us on, um, which was great. So we loved having that discussion with him. Um, and our model UN team finished out the year um, this week, this past weekend at Dartmouth, um, competing there. Um, I think that's all the updates I have. I know Principal Bando is gonna be here um, to talk. So he'll probably fill you guys in a little bit more tonight.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions? Can you say anything from you? You're all, everything wrapped up? You shaking your head? Yes. Any questions for the student reps? Seeing none. Thank you so much. All right. So next I'd like to go into update and discussion on the regional agreement. What I'd like to do is turn the floor over to Ken Mills.
All right, thank you. So uh, I want to thank so many members who were at the meeting on April eighth and uh, asked just a little bit of moment to reshare what I shared there, just to set the stage for the issues um, that that we'll want to discuss. Um, so if you don't mind, I remember Chair Dennis, I'm gonna share my screen if it lets me. So let's see. All right. So I'm just gonna do a very quick, high level view of the agreement, what we know we might want to discuss. Uh, first off, this is reviewed every, reviewed every five years. And uh, that at one point had been changed to every three years, um, because the towns were, I guess, a little bit displeased with the district at that point, but goes back to five years, our last, our last session. Um, we voted the changes at town meeting in twenty sixteen. Um, we, we may have to do a special meeting this time if there is changes. Changes require votes from four or five towns and approval by the commissioner of education. And some of the sections, skipping section one, section two says a high school must be in Holden, another high school could be in another town. Section three says the district is PK to twelve, so there's no partial withdrawal things in the um, in the, in the document as written. Uh, going back to section one, because it was long, talks about the size of the committee. Uh, every five years, the town census are taken into account to determine if there should be more or less seats per town. Um, this must obey the one person, one vote um, principle. Uh, when the commissioner signed this last time, uh, he, the previous commissioner did so with a note saying, um, I'm signing this, but you are in violation of this, of this principle. So the, the numbers that are on the screen, the first chart is from the regional agreement and how the numbers of committee members change. Um, the second bit is the most recent um, uh, census numbers to show that Rutland would be close to having two uh, two, two more members. Um, if, if Princeton got smaller or Rutland got a little bit bigger. Uh, in the past, when we've had these discussions, I, I didn't lead them, but um, but options around the table were one rep. To make the committee smaller uh, was to have one reps in the smaller town, basically divide by, by, by two. Uh, the smaller towns tended to, to object to that, uh, to have weighted voting, so that you might have numbers that don't represent one person, one vote. Uh, but then balance that with, with weighting each person's vote, concerns in the past or about how transparent that seemed during the meetings. Another possibility we really haven't discussed in the past is having district wide elections to avoid the one person, one vote concern of everyone votes for um, votes for members. Um, sections four to six deal with money. Um, so things that changed recently was how often the towns paid us, so our thanks to the towns for, for doing quarterly payments to avoid having um, revenue anticipation notes, which cost the district and the taxpayers money. Um, and uh, also talks a bit about proportioning costs, although some of that is in the state law as well. And it talks about the fact that as a regional district, we require report to transfer all students over a certain distance, which isn't true for municipal districts. Um, section seven, they talk about admissions or withdrawal of town, short thing, and as easy we vote, they pay some money and they're in. Uh, out is hard. It says the town initiates the process. It doesn't say what that means, um, if that's a voter. Um, but ultimately, uh, that town has to vote two thirds majority to town meeting to withdraw. And then there's a majority district wide vote in all the other towns. Out's also expensive. They have to pay their share based on their student population of any debt free facilities or replacement cost. Um, and there's no partial withdrawal, so a town can't say, we want to pull out K eight and um, and uh, and do that. Sections nine and ten talk about annual reports and our, our budget reporting. Uh, section eleven talks about rules for assigning students to schools outside of their own towns, which right now requires a town approval unless there's an emergency like there have been in the past with um, with building repairs um, for special education with parent approval or by parent request. Uh, section twelve to thirteen talks about powers of the committee, electing our officers, buying property, having central office. Section fourteen talks about amendments being considered and how those have to be approved. And that we can't change the agreement to um, uh, can't change the ability to emit new towns or to avoid paying our debts. Um, section fifteen talks about how the district can take on debt, um, and how that debt is shared between the towns. Section sixteen talks about capital expenses from surplus. This is something we might want to talk about. Uh, there was a limit of two fifty K from E and D for one year or one project. And we kind of ran into an issue with that and we tried to replace the roof on the ECC using E and D uh, recently. Uh, leases basically defines the towns as landlords, um, but their lease agreements give a lot more detail uh, to that relationship. Uh, their most recent change, we put in provisions for the towns to use the schools in case of emergency, which is kind of after the ice storm, I think, and doing an annual maintenance audit. The, that threshold issue is in the lease agreements, it's not in this document. So that's, that's in brief, uh, what we've done so far is, let me see if I can stop sharing. Stop it. There we go. What we've done so far is uh, is we had this, this hearing with the towns. Um, we, uh, last week, the um, there was some confusion, I think, with a member deleting it in their calendar. And then some people getting messages about the meeting being deleted, so one of the towns was, was kind of concerned about, about that. Um, Rutland is meeting um, this week, Paxton is meeting next week uh, to discuss this. So due to that, uh, we pushed off, or I pushed off our subcommittee meeting till um, two weeks from Wednesday, so we could have time to receive information from those towns. Um, so the subcommittee will consider the towns' input, uh, Holden had some input and Pak, Princeton had input at the meeting on Thursday. We'll consider the towns' inputs. I will consider your input. And ideally, if, if Chair Dennis is in agreement, the committee will make a recommendation, make recommendations or at least observations to the full committee for our deliberation at a meeting in uh, in May. So that's where we are. So the goal tonight was not to make any decisions or to really reflect on what the towns want, except for how perhaps uh, you as members may want to reflect your towns' wishes if they were communicated to you. I think it was really just a chance for us to put on the table what we as a committee see as our priorities. We'll hear from the towns, then we'll come back and put that all in context together um, at a, at a future meeting.
Thank you, Ken. So we'll uh, open it up for people to raise their hands and add discussion. So we're uh, building a queue. It looks like we have Bob Imber first.
Oh, no, not that. All right. So I've, I've been on this subcommittee, not this year, but I, I don't know, three, four times in the past. And, and for two of those times, and, and particularly one, we spent oodles of time looking at all sorts of computer models and all sorts of issues and all of these, these sorts of things. And, and I was part of the, the group that went to three years to be responsive and then back to, to, to the five. And we've changed some things in terms of limits. But I, I will say, number one, I'm, I'm strongly opposed to anything that would decrease Princeton or Paxton's membership from two. And I think that's just an incredible burden on any one person if they're not out, that the in-town is not represented. So it, it's just really a really bad model. Secondly, we looked at the, at the, and extensively, all of the research that had to do with the size of the committee. And you know what? Um, just an, incidentally, I've worked with school committees of three people and the meetings regularly went to, to, to eleven PM and, and beyond and came to fisticuffs and all kinds of crazy stuff. It's not the size of the committee. This committee with twenty-two members, I, I think, uh, the members are, are rich in, in their expertise and their questions and their insights. And I don't find these meetings go on forever. I, I find generally, we have really, really good committees. And yes, the chair helps that, that, that sum. Um, and it depends on, on particular members at a particular time. But in general, folks are insightful and they have lots of knowledge. And, and it, it wasn't the size that was the issue. And, and the research, I think, also supports that. And they talk about sorts of things of ideal size and, 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 but we have a unique situation where, number one, um, we're representing five different towns. It's not a typical situation. We also have a, a situation where we tremendously under um, support uh, uh, in terms of, of, of money, administration. And because we do not have a robust administration, we have lots of subcommittees. And there's no way to support all of those subcommittees with, with school committee members. So we have a unique sort of situation. It's a very unusual board, but, but it's also an unusual situation in terms of central mass and having the largest subcommittee. And, and so, you know, I, I think before I got on, I would have said, what are you crazy? Why do you have all those subcommittees and why do they have all those roles? And why do they play such an important role in the district? But the option other than that is to, to, to expend huge sums of money on administration. And I actually, I think we're still, we ought to be spending a lot more money on administration because there are a lot more things that need to be done by administration. And, and we've tremendously underfunded that area. But still, we have a facility subcommittee, we have education subcommittee, we have legal affairs subcommittee, we have uh, uh, superintendent's evaluation subcommittee. Um, and I can go on, but, but the point is, if you don't have people to do that, we have a unique structure and, and we would have to be willing to dramatically train, change that structure. So, so it's not just, you know, you can't just all of a sudden say, oh, we want a small committee because everybody thinks that's a good thing. It's really pretty ill advised, given the structure we're currently using, unless we use a, a five or for a ten year phase out to, to looking to an entirely different model of structuring our district. So it, it's, it's a much bigger issue than just, oh, everybody thinks, let's have a smaller committee. And, and then beyond that, if we go to a smaller committee, let's say we went to eleven or thirteen, so that we had the members that we needed for Princeton and we had the members that we needed for Paxton, just in case somebody was absent, particularly for, for an extended period of time. Um, then you need to go to weighted voted. And weighted voting is, is, is very, it's a real hassle. And you could do it, but it's a tremendous hassle. Every single vote that you take, you have to consider, okay, well, one of the Princeton representatives is, you know, point six eight percent of the district. And we were told by, we also explored legal issue extensively about what was, you know, what was our liability in terms of, of not having the one person, one vote and choosing a model? And ultimately, the decision was, is this a rational model for your situation? And would, would, would it stand up to legal scrutiny? And, and all of the legal advice we got at the time was, yes, it would. It's a reasonable model and, and you were trying to represent people in a reasonable way. And, and you're doing your best and it's sensible. So, uh, you know, I don't know where this committee is going. Again, I will be off. Probably, you know, I'm not going to the meeting on the twenty-sixth. It's my birthday. I'm gonna be in the DR. And, and, and um, you know, you know, good luck, folks. But, but I've, 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 I've explored this issue over and over and over again in subcommittee. And, and, and with all kinds, at, at one time, we had somebody who was great with all kinds of, of um, um, computer modeling and we, we tested all kinds of things. I'd also advise, although we seem to do okay with twenty-two members, but I'd also advise an odd number of members whenever possible. So that's useful. And we may adjust to that when we go to the new numbers. But that's a, that, that seemed to matter a lot in the modeling. So those are, those are my like, um, I, I think, you know, a dollar's worth, no, two.
Sorry. Thanks, Bob. I have Carl next.
Yeah, thank you. So and certainly I just wanted to add kind of a little, some of the discussion that we had at, at our first ad hoc meeting. Especially, and again, there's a lot of the agreement that's out there and kind of, but things did seem to come back to kind of the size of the committee. And certainly, I guess, like, one of the things to think about is, as kind of, as Bob alluded to, is the role of the committee and really how we use subcommittees. Because with a bigger committee like we have right now, we can do more work. We've got more folks that we can put to working in subcommittees. A smaller committee, you might be doing more, more of the work in a full committee. And so part of it kind of just comes to, like, as a body, what kind of what, what type of organization, what type of setup we have that would uh, kind of support the type of thing that we would do? Or if we would do, like, aim for something that's kind of in the middle, like a sixteen person committee, where maybe we could still have all the same, same subcommittees, they'd just be a little smaller, like five and, like five down to forty, like something like that. Um, so and these, like, these are things to think about as we kind of move forward. Um, and then just a couple of things, like I had done some research on um, other regional school districts across Massachusetts. Just, I mean, like, just so folks would have some background, um, there's forty-five regionals. Almost thirty of them are just two town regionals, so that's a little bit different. Um, there's one seven town regional, Central Berkshire. There's three, five towns, um, and then there's two, four towns and then a bunch of three towns. So the larger regionals are certainly kind of in the minority. And in terms of what their school committees look like, so Central Berkshire with their seven towns has a fifteen member committee. Um, the other five town regionals, actually both here in central mass, uh, Tantasca has sixteen, Quabin has fifteen. Um, the four towns, they're at eight and nine. So just to, to give you an idea what like the other regional school districts are doing in terms of what their committees look like. So we are uh, largest population wise by a, by a significant margin. Uh, we've got Bridgewater, Rainham by a good thousand. And so we're also the largest by committee. So just some other things to keep in mind in terms of like what other people are doing across the state.
But, but Carl, just to, just to add and respond, uh, we're a little unique in the sense that, that uh, the community, some of our communities are quite small and then you have Holden that's quite large. And so that's also unique.
Well, but the other regional school districts have some of those as well. So I mean, it's not like we're the only school district, we're the only regional that's just like us. And like, you look at the other school districts, some of them are diverse, some of them are more homogeneous, some are more heterogeneous. And so um, it's not kind of a, we're not as unique as the magical unicorn that's out there. Differences, but not a uh, we're not a completely out there. So just, just some things to keep in mind, just to kind of some perspective for kind of where we fall. Thanks.
Mike Panto, you have a point of order?
I just wanted to clarify that we're speaking through the chair. We're not uh, directly conversing. Is that correct? Are we allowed to freely converse?
Uh, no, I would ask that to uh, just that we get to have some organization through our Google meets if we can raise our hands. Um, and, and do it that way. I mean, we are trying, I think, to have uh, this, this is a little more of a discussion. Um, but um, you know, so I'm not uh, too hung up on, on, you know, if you have a question for Ken as a chair or something like that. But yeah, let's, let's try to maintain the order that we have in the uh, queue.
I'm just looking to keep things timely. Uh, and I believe I'm next in the queue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Coincidentally, no, no offense, Imber. Um, so I haven't talked uh, actually to the Rutland Select Board. They have not uh, gotten together and discussed this yet, as you know. I would like to offer my uh, two or maybe twenty-five cents. Uh, I would suggest that we change this to a three year review instead of a five year review. I think that's a good idea. District wide elections, I think, are an awful idea because then you get into the larger towns controlling more than the smaller towns. They're not getting there necessarily. Not every town would then be representative, if I understand that correctly. To uh, the chair uh, of the subcommittee uh, member Mills, uh, what were you saying about number, in violation of number of reps? Is that correct?
So the principle is that there should be one person, one vote, so that the, the membership on the committee should be reflective of the percentages of populations in the towns. And as member Imber suggests, the diversity of sizes in the committee really makes that challenging. And the commissioner pointed out that our ratios in our um, agreement um, don't really meet that standard. Um, you know, one can note that they go up by twos as well, right, instead of by ones. Um, so you know, it's, it's not the same as the um, if you were to just normalize the, which I had on that chart, normalize to one, the, the percent, the fractions aren't, uh, don't exactly work out. But he did sign it anyway.
And what would be the solution to that?
I mean, the solution to that is the commissioner signing it anyway, uh, having an outrageously large committee. Um, doing district wide voting, which doesn't, you could have, you could have certain number of seats per town, but then have them voted by district wide, so at least you voted for those representatives. I, I think that that's something we haven't explored in the subcommittee. Um, or the weighted voting is, is the cleanest way to do it. But again, it makes the meetings seem weird because I vote and two of you vote and I win. It seems not the super most transparent um, way to run a meeting. But those, those are, those are the options that are out there. And as member Imber suggested, Steve Hammond years ago, I have all the spreadsheets, did a lot of work on, on those, those possibilities.
Um, and another question for you, in the uh, threshold in the lease agreements for um, facility upkeep and whatnot for expenses, uh, is that very differently on a town by town basis? Or is that consistent?
No, that's, that's a consistent thing, but that's in the lease agreements. That's not in the regional agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Sherry?
Uh, to echo member Imber's points, I especially think that the insightfulness and the knowledge of the members of the committee has been um, fantastic. And I don't know how we would manage with a smaller committee, especially with subcommittees. Uh, but my question then is, if we do get to that point, how does that work? How do we reduce a committee? Uh, is it done over a five year period? Uh, what do we do with those subcommittees? What happens if we go to a smaller committee?
I, I don't know if that was a rhetorical question, but I, I, I think we have to discuss the how we reduce, right? If we would just eliminate the committee and revote, or if we would go down over time. I think when Steve had made proposals, maybe ten years ago, his proposal was a step down, but that's just one option. Um, a, and as, as, as Bob said, you know, I think the balance is, do you have a small committee that does all its work at the main meetings? Or do you have a big committee that does a lot of subcommittee work and then lets the subcommittee do the work and trust them? And doesn't relitigate the whole thing at, at full committee? So I think those, that's kind of the balance at um, you know, in, in how you'd structure such things.
Thank you, Ken. Malia?
Hey. Plan back, we'll see. My internet being weird. Um, I think I had two questions. My first was, I think Ken just mentioned this. I, I was wondering why it increases by two representatives instead of one. Um, I, I've never heard an explanation for that and I don't expect Ken to know. But I, I was struck by that when I looked at it in detail, um, because that seems like that would make more sense. Um, and I, and it would keep us a little bit smaller. It just didn't make sense to go up by two members every time. So I'd love to know if there's a good reason for that. Um, let's see. My second question was about um, the issue of a smaller committee. I do think we need to be a smaller committee, but um, I guess, I don't know if this is a solution, but the answer, the question of um, small towns only having one, that member isn't there. We've had meetings in my history um, on the committee, and on the committee about three, four years, I think. Um, we have had um, issues in times where there have been no representatives from some of the towns because they have two representatives and none of them, neither of them are there. Um, it's only happened a few times, but it has happened and we have never, that's never been a problem. Um, I, I don't, and I know there are many other districts in this state that have committees where they have one member per town or per district in cities. Um, and if they're not there, they, they carry on. Um, and I don't really, a good answer for that, I just throw that out as a point of discussion that that does happen frequently in committees and groups. And there's not a rule that says you can't still have a discussion and conduct business. We've never abided by that, as I said, times where we haven't had members from either town. Uh, meetings where we've barely had quorum and um, some of those didn't have people from two towns um, because people were sick or spaces were unfilled. Um, you know, spots were vacant, whatever the situation. I, I don't have a good solution, but I just wanted to point that out, that that is common unless we have a rule specifically stating that we can't meet. Um, and, and I don't know how it's different if there's one representative per town or two representatives per town. It's not ideal, obviously. But I, I, it just crossed my mind that we have operated under that in the past and it's never been pointed out as a problem in those meetings. So I don't know how it's different if we were to reduce our size. I know some will disagree, not saying definitively what the solution is, but I, I do think we need, I, I think weighted voting would be a nightmare personally, so I'd like to avoid that. But I also, even if we're fine now at 22 members, um, I'm concerned that as we keep growing, um, and the towns keep growing with the current ratios we have, I mean, we'll probably have to add two or possibly four new members, the, when the new census numbers come out, depending on, with the way it's structured now. And that's just a lot of people to keep adding. Two of our towns are getting larger quite rapidly, particularly Holden. And I just think that's only going to keep, keep compounding the situation. So that's a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. I have Laura next.
Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate the number of committee members that we have for the, the basic reason that the institutional knowledge that new members can acquire when there are enough members of the committee that can pass along their expertise, their experiences. You know, somebody who can say, as Member Ember has said, you know, back when we did this before, right? If we were a smaller committee, the potential of having either people in on a committee for much longer than they might, uh, be useful and, and become exhausted. Or people who, who leave very quickly because they're burned out and we just lose the institutional knowledge and you have a bunch of new people all the time refreshing the committee. Um, I think that there's, there's a nice balance here. We've got folks who have been on the committees, been on the committee for, you know, eight years or so, and then there are some who are still in their first couple of years. And I think that that's helpful, um, to have that diversity of knowledge and enthusiasm and, and energy. I don't know the solution, but it feels to me, as Member Gupssen has, has said, that, you know, as some towns continue to grow and others are projected to decrease, um, at least in student contributions to the community, to the schools, it seems prudent to at least entertain the idea that, that perhaps there could be a cap, a minimum number per town, maybe two, but a maximum number that we cap out at, um, so that it doesn't become so disproportionate. If, if Holden, you know, continues to grow at, at rates that are, that we're seeing, it's possible that this, this committee could become even more top heavy with Holden representatives and therefore the, the votes of the minority become less impactful. Um, and so I, I would hate for that to be, um, to be a scenario that we, that we see come to pass. Um, in terms of, uh, I've heard the towns talk about, uh, partial withdrawal or removing themselves from the agreement, sort of opting out of the, the, you know, it's difficult to do. And, um, I want to dive into that a little bit more because, um, I, I want to know why we keep, we keep hearing this. Why do towns want to opt out or entertain the idea to opt out when for all intents and purposes, regionalizing should provide a consistency of experience, fidelity within curriculum experiences and a distribution of resources that should support all members of our five towns. And I'm wondering why towns don't see a value added. They see their numbers going up, their minimum contributions going up year after year, you know, more than they're comfortable with, more than they can, they can meet with the potential tax revenue, although I'm not sure how when we keep building all over the place. But, um, there seems to be a lack of understanding or a lack of appreciation, or maybe a lack of value added, period. And I'm not sure what's happened here, why this doesn't seem to be working for, for the towns. And so I'd like to dive into that a little bit more. I don't have a solution, but for me, um, that I keep hearing about that and I keep hearing people wanting to opt out and, and, you know, sort of get out of the agreement as if it's going to magically make things better. I don't know what the answer is. So I'd like to, I'd like to parse that out a little bit more. And then in terms of transportation, um, and maybe this is a piece of why people want to opt out, because we're not being, the state is not reimbursing us at the level that are, are, that we should be. We are supposed, we're supposed to be getting a hundred percent of regional transportation by appropriations and year after year after year, we're not seeing that. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm wondering, do we add a fee perhaps for transportation? If people were, are within a certain mileage point within the district and they're still using transportation? I don't know if we can. I, I don't fully understand how the language works with the transportation, but it seems to me that perhaps we need to solve the transportation funding deficit some way. If the state's not going to pony up their end of the bargain, uh, we either need to push back on the state more or we need to come up with a local solution. You know, a pay to ride or something for, for people that are close by. I don't think it's going to be a popular, uh, you know, proposal, but I, I think transportation, the partial withdrawal, opting out mechanism, and then the, the, um, the size of the committee are my three priorities.
Thank you. I don't know, Ken or, or Daryl, if you have anything to speak to with respect to the last two points, about towns and about transportation.
With transportation, and Daryl can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, we're obligated to provide transportation for students who live a mile and a half beyond their school. That's why we get reimbursement. Municipal districts aren't required to do that, so they can charge those people. We could charge people who live within a mile and a half. District administrations presented two reasons why they didn't like to do that in the past. One is that they're worried the students' parents will choose not to pay for that. And since many of our schools, the more rural towns don't have sidewalks, so there could be a safety issue for the children. And secondly, that, um, that measuring out what a mile and a half is in some of the more urban towns, okay, in the urban town, um, is a, is a challenge, uh, to, to, um, to figure out like who pays, who doesn't. And that would require perhaps some administrative assistance to do that. And I'm not passing judgment on whether those are right or wrong. I'm just saying, Daryl seems to be nodding that that was the, the concern. If you pull out of the regional district and you're not part of a regional district, you can charge, but you don't get any regional district transportation reimbursement because you're not a regional district anymore. Municipals aren't reimbursed for transportation. That was a carrot to try and get people to, to regionalize. In terms of what the towns are thinking, I don't want to read into the towns' thoughts. I don't think administration would want to either. That's their own, their own business and they can communicate that to us. You know, so, um, it's usually this time of the year, you know? So we'll let them tell us in their own letters and their own words, I would say.
Thank you. I have Adam next.
Thanks. Um, so just a, a couple of concerns, again, it's on the, the size of the committee. Yeah, we're, we're a deliberative body and there's many situations, for example, this one today, where we're discussing the issue and deliberating it, but we're not going to come to a vote today. So, you know, if we go to a case where it's, you know, people have different amounts of votes so that we can reduce the size, do we then give those people different amounts of time they're allowed to talk? You know, how do you track that? Or does a single person still get the same amount of time as another person? Then they're, you know, the people they represent are not getting as much voice within the deliberative body. It's, it's a slippery slope either way. And, I mean, just tracking that, it, it, it becomes more cumbersome than having a few more people in, in the actual committee. You know, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to the size of the current committee. I can see how some cases, you know, these meetings would be more efficient if there were fewer of us. But we'd also need to be doing more within the full body as opposed to subcommittees. You know, I've run a subcommittee and we've been down to two people at times, which is really not the way to run a subcommittee because, you know, two people, you have a disagreement, nothing gets done. You know, you need at least three people for a subcommittee and then you have to guarantee that they're there at the meeting. So, you know, it's, you, you're stuck either way. You know, I think reducing it somewhat might make sense. You know, and there's, there's not really a good way to do that and still abide by the one person, one vote idea. You know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at something where it's one person, one vote based on one member per town and then each town also gets another member added on. You know, it's kind of a, a representative and set type model and it's always a joint session. You know, it's just another idea. I don't know if that would work. But, you know, I guess the point is do not go to weighted voting. It, that, that'll just make everything 10 times harder and less efficient at the end of the day. That's it.
Thank you, Adam. So, um, next person I had was Bob, then Mike Pantis, and then Carl.
So, um, again, I understand that at times, subcommittees and, and even the whole committee might not have two or one representatives from a town, but I wouldn't want to institutionalize that. I, I just think by, by saying, here's what we're going to do in terms of the composition of the committee, then institutionalizes it and that's not a good thing. Secondly, I think there are a bunch of, of other issues that are raised having to do with, you know, towns and wanting to opt out. And I think the opt out thing is because in a lot of ways, the, the, it's not the regional agreement that's unfair, but it's what the state does. And the state formula has been unfair and it's been unfair. So for example, Princeton at times has paid 98 or 99% of the cost of all the students and the state is paying 1%. That's messed up. I'm sorry, it is. And another town in the district is paying, uh, you know, 60 something percent or 40 something percent. Those inequities are a problem. And that, and again, that's a state problem. That's not our problem, except we've been working and we've been trying to change that state problem and it needs to change because it's wrong. And then thirdly, there's a transportation problem. And this is a separate problem again, but we have a lot of rural towns and this is not only us. I mean, there are lots of districts throughout the, you know, throughout the, the Commonwealth that do not have sidewalks, that, that, that one and a half mile rule is messed up. You can't ask kids to walk that. It's not safe and it's wrong. And the state needs to address that issue, but those are separate issues and, and I would encourage the committee and I would encourage our representatives to address those issues. But that's not this issue of the regional agreement. They're separate issues and they're wrong. And they have to be changed. But they are separate issues. And so let's keep sort of, you know, clarity on what are our issues? What's, what's, you know, the poop on our carpet? And what can we do? And I, I think in terms of weighted voting, it's going to be a problem. There need to be at least two representatives from, from each of the tiny communities. And, and, uh, you know, I feel lucky to have the school committee reps that, that are my colleagues. So thanks.
Thanks, Bob. I have Mike Pantis.
So I would like to, as I do agree, agree that, uh, we do need at least two, in my opinion, two reps from each town, uh, for things to be fair. I do think Member Christian Baum made some good points about, um, why are the towns lacking, um, value in the district per se? Uh, or losing interest in being regionalized, uh, whether it be mistrust, whether it be of the finances or whatnot. I know Rutland's, uh, while I do hear that we might be due for more members, uh, pretty soon, I don't, I'm not for the idea of increasing the size of the committee. I would love more present, representation because I think Rutland is unrepresented. However, I'm not for increasing the size of the committee. And I also think a great idea might be some sort of, uh, limit of three terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Uh, real quick, and I just wanted to, uh, at, make a couple of comments or kind of just some clarification with a lot of the discussion you've had on weighted voting. But although I will add, Adam's point about weighted speaking time was something I hadn't, hadn't even thought of that as well, but that was very valid. But one thing to just keep in mind when you're hearing about weighted voting is that there's, and it was for me as well, that there's, there's kind of a perception that for every single vote that gets taken, you've got someone tallying the individual 1.1, 0.9 of a vote. And you might not have to do that because in fact, for most votes, if some, unless it's decided by like a vote of one or an eight, eight, even the fractions of it wouldn't really matter. So you take, you do your roll call vote and it's 12, four, you don't have to break out your calculator. So it's not, it's not necessarily as time consuming as you might think, because you're not having to do that for every single vote that you take. If it's something that's eight, eight or nine, nine, then you would, because that's where it can come into play. Or if you're right at a two thirds for something that's two thirds, then you need to calculate it. But, um, just, just, just to clarify with that, that it's, with all the talk about weighted voting, that it's, you don't have to run, you have, you don't have to break out your calculators and slide rolls every time. So just, just something else to kind of keep in the back of your minds as you're thinking about different pros and cons of sizes, weighted voting and other things like that.
Thank you, Carl. Any other discussion on the regional agreement?
Just, just briefly, we did hear at the meeting from, from Holden and, and, um, and Princeton. So, you know, the, the committee heard their concerns, were waiting for, you know, we'll wait for the other. Be looking forward to having a discussion about their priorities in the future.
Sure. And just to reiterate the process going forward, um, you know, we are extending the, the, you know, the, the time for, for towns to give us feedback. You know, we are asking for them to, to give us some written feedback as well. And I think Holden indicated that they were looking to do that, uh, in addition to, um, their participation in the, in the public hearing. So again, next steps is that, um, as that feedback comes in, um, the, uh, Ken's committee, Subcommittee on, on Regional Agreement, um, is now, uh, focused on meeting on the 28th, I think I already just said.
Yes.
All right. So thank you for that. If there is no other discussion, we'll move into the Superintendent's report and the first item is an update on the K8 reopening. So I'll turn that over to Daryl.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. And thank you all for the conversation. It's good to hear that. I have been living through this for the past 20 years in terms of conversations around pulling out of the district, staying in the district and so forth. So, um, this is all, you all make valid points, uh, across the board and I do appreciate just, uh, the conversation. What I'm going to do right now is just pull my screen up. So I'm going to share with you.
So this is, uh, what I'll do real quick is do an update on our K8 reopening. So, um, last week we were able to bring, um, our K8 students back to school. About 90% of them came back. We still have 10% who are, um, in remote learning, um, as we, you know, speak right now. Some still might come back during this time. Uh, I had the opportunity to speak with all the building principals last week and, uh, in my report that I shared with you, uh, we did put their, um, actually their feedback to me was, was put directly into my report. So some of the things that we talked about were that students and staff were really happy to be back. That was, uh, it was just so nice. And you mentioned this Chair Dennis, uh, seeing the buses, uh, go through the neighborhoods and seeing a lot of kids in the buses now. It was, it was absolutely wonderful. Minor issues last week, uh, really just included busing and van times. Again, it takes a good week or two, um, uh, you know, in September for this to really move forward so that the times are really aligned properly. So, uh, we're still doing that. It should be good by the end of this week. Parent pickup and drop offs. Uh, there were concerns around the amount of traffic. We do have some schools, in particular Davis Hill, uh, that has just an awful lot of, um, parents bringing their kids to school and picking their kids up. So we've been working with big building. So we've been working with big building principals and with our, uh, local police around the best way to kind of work through that and deal with that. We are encouraging families to put kids on, on the bus so that we don't run into this situation, uh, in, in all of our schools. You know, another big thing was principals talking about just making sure that remote students remain integrated in the schools. You know, I had the opportunity to talk with some teachers about this last week and they were just, you know, not only excited to have the kids in front of them, but continue to have those kids that they have had all year long, um, as part of their classroom. So that's something that's going to continue for the remainder of this year. And then lunch, lunch was something that principals were concerned about. We were concerned about how that was going to roll out, how it was going to play out in terms of coverage and so forth. It has not been as much of an issue as we thought. Kids have been, uh, able to get through. We have had to extend some times. We've had, um, actually more kids, uh, actually getting lunch through the cafeteria, uh, rather than bringing their own lunch. So that was new, uh, was not something that we predicted, but, um, we've had to extend some times and contract some other times. But so far, uh, everything has been going well with the, uh, K-8 reopening. So I'm going to jump out of this and if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the K-8 reopening? I've got Sherry first.
Do we have a plan in place, uh, to get feedback from remote families for what is going on as far as their, um, new plans are concerned?
Yeah. So the thought, Sherry, this is a good question. Thought was to send something out after break. So I wanted to give a couple of weeks for everything to get rolling. Have break and then, um, the week after break, we send something out to remote families.
Thank you. Malaya next.
Okay. Um, I did want to say a special thank you to, um, Daryl and the principals for the updates. I found those really helpful and I know that took a lot of time from, from their very busy schedule. I had a question, not really a question, but some things about the busing because I, um, you know, a random comment about that. And I, I got a lot of comments from the community about the busing and why, um, there it's anecdotal. Heard from a dozen different families about, you know, whether the, the lack of bus ridership and increased traffic was due to schedule changes or, um, due to the distancing concerns and the general feedback that I got was that some people are just not comfortable with the lack of distance, which is totally beyond our control. Others are concerned about things that they have seen, things like people eating on the buses, kids not wearing their masks on the buses. They understand the bus drivers can't drive and monitor all of that. But they had seen evidence either on, you know, day one or friends riding the buses that they, um, were not comfortable having their students on the buses because of, of not wearing, kids not wearing masks and kids eating. And also on some buses, windows not being open. So they were concerned about students on the buses, which again, they understood that the driver can't really monitor all of that and drive. So I don't know if the solution to the traffic is more bus monitors perhaps. I don't know if the, every bus has a monitor, particularly with younger kids. I know the actual spacing is beyond our control. We went from, you know, a lot of very specific guidelines from Desi to absolutely no spacing from the buses. So I just, hearing all of the concern about the traffic, and you know, some families are really going crazy trying to get from one school to another to pick up two different kids in two different places and, and running into challenges and then waiting in line for three hours just to do pickup or drop off. I didn't know if, I was starting to read those concerns since I heard them from a number of different people, um, kind of unexpectedly. Those are some of the, the issues that they've observed on buses. I also heard that a lot of people are doing a great job and they're very happy about, you know, how school's been going and, and even the buses, but those are some reasons that some families, um, indicated they were not giving, uh, you know, putting their kids on the bus, particularly younger elementary kids. So hopefully, I just shared that as feedback. I was glad to hear that generally things were going well. I'd be very curious to hear the feedback from the remote families once we have that because I am very curious about that piece as well. So, um, the other question I had was about spacing. I think there was some schools, when I read the report, some schools were using the spacing like the gym and the library and the gym, art rooms and music room for lunches. And some were being able to use them for their specials, like having gym in the, so I'm curious if that will continue or, um, you know, it's unfortunate that some schools are not able to have gym in the gym while others are, just because they happen to have more room in their building, I guess. It stood out to me and I hope those kids are still having a positive experience, but those are my couple of comments.
Sure. I'll just quickly answer that last one. You're exactly right, Malaya. Some of the schools have more space than others. Uh, some schools have more students than others. So we do have schools that are using, um, gymnasiums, um, for cafeteria. We do have schools that are using library as classrooms, uh, art room as a classroom, music room as a classroom. So it, it's the way it has to work right now in order for us to get the students into the building and have the six-foot spacing when a mask is off and lunch is happening. The good news about PE is it can get kids outside now, uh, that it's warmer and, uh, they're outside anyway. Probably 90% of the time, uh, in the spring before school ends. So that's, that's the good news. But yeah, it's, it's different. It's not going to be the same as it typically is. And, um, we do not know yet what the fall will look like as well in terms of, uh, social distancing.
Thank you. I have Kate next.
Um, so I've spoken with the middle schoolers several times, um, either in the past week or the week before. Um, I have some pretty, pretty major concerns about COVID protocol not being followed actually within the schools. The most horrifying story was today, um, one of the, one of the students in the group said a child pulled down their mask, picked their nose, wiped it on the desk, and then the desk was not washed after class. Um, and the teacher was not like forcing the kids to wipe their desk so they didn't wash their hands after class and half of them didn't hand sanitize. And so I, I'm really worried about that. I'm also worried, um, students are reaching into this big jug, or it's like tub full of milks. Um, so everyone's hands are touching the milks, um, during lunch. And so then the milk's going in the mouth from, um, what was touched by another kid. And just the hallways are not socially distanced at all. So I'm just, I have some, some concerns about all of that. Um, so I did just want to share that with everyone so that that was, um, made known that there are issues occurring within schools. And the other concern I heard was that one of, um, the students said that if they were a remote kid, um, that they would hate themselves because they would not be included in the classroom. So I do have concerns about those remote students as well, just from what I've heard so far from, um, a select group of middle schoolers.
Thanks, Katie. And, you know, again, I think you're going to run into issues associated with, um, different things that are going, that go on in terms of perceptions from kids around what's going on in the classroom, what's getting cleaned, what isn't getting cleaned. We do have pretty strict, specific protocols that we have in place with all of the teachers, with all of the administrators, with custodians. So, um, we're really highly dependent upon kids to follow the directions. In terms of the milk, I'm not sure, um, how that one plays out, but I can get you that answer after as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Eric next.
Hi. Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to put a couple of comments in there. The, the principals' reports I thought were fantastic. It was great reading them. They had a lot of positive, positive comments to say, and I think they kind of all highlighted some of the similar challenges around transportation and traffic and things like that. But it's good to see that kind of, uh, update from every individual school. I, I also felt like just from my own personal experience here in Princeton, that the teamwork between the school, staff and the police department as well, has been pretty incredible. I mean, the first day was, was, um, pretty busy, but there's been a lot of adjustment and quick action and you have teachers and staff out there running the show. So I think it's really a testament to the, to the collaboration of, of, of everybody. And the parents have been great as far as following the instructions of where to go, where to park, forming lines, things like that. So to be honest with you, I think it's working far better than I would have imagined considering the circumstances. So I just wanted to, uh, thank the staff, staff and all the families for that. I think this really, uh, it's really a good, good thing to see.
That's great, Eric. That's good to hear. And you know what? Thank you for just bringing up the, uh, the police assisting. So the police have helped out all of the schools in terms of being there the first couple of days. They have good relationships with their building principals and have been supportive in terms of just monitoring the traffic in and out of schools because we, we do, we do need to be careful with kids walking in, walking lines, walking into the buildings, getting dropped off by families and the buses at the same time. So thanks for bringing that up.
Any other questions or comments on the K-8 reopening? If not, then we'll go into an update on the high school proposed reopening. Daryl, you're on mute.
Sorry, Mike. Yeah. So what I'll do is Bill's here, Principal Viano. So, uh, Bill, I'll pull up these slides and we can go through those. I'm going to just jump down because high school reopening, graduation, end of the year activities. Uh, so Bill, I'll let you start.
Yeah, sure. Thanks everyone for having me here tonight. Um, always look forward to speaking about the high school. So my pleasure to be here. Basically, there, there's a lot of information to share and there's still some more information for us as we're working on it this week and, and we'll be getting that all out to our families and to our staff over the next couple of days. But basically we have 1,400 students coming back to us, or not coming back to us in total, but 1,400 total kids joining us starting April 26th. That means, and I think one of the big focus here will be lunch for us. That's always been, um, a concern. Means we'll have approximately 350 students at each lunch. Meeting with our cafeteria manager and also with Margaret Barton, the district person, um, in charge of the caf. Today, we are pretty confident that we can get all students through the line in a half hour to, um, to get their lunch. Our current setup will be, and this is breaking news kind of in some ways, that all of our freshmen will be eating in the main cafeteria, which is about 125 students. We'll have, uh, desks, student desks in the main caf and student desks also, for those of you that know our building. And the two low, two of the lower gyms, that will be all student desks. That's where sophomores will be eating. Upstairs in the big gym, we'll be taking over a lot of the bleachers and that is going to be where our juniors and seniors will be eating. We do have a couple of other spaces for overflow or for students that, you know, want to, want to change things up. And we'll do that on a case-by-case basis. And those spaces are the two outside areas near the caf. One that's directly off of the cafeteria, which could probably fit 25 students. And then we have what we refer to as the alumni courtyard outside of the auditorium, which also could, could fit 35, 40 students. We will use the hallway in front of the auditorium with student desks. We'll also use for, again, for those that know the school, the back of our cafeteria has a hallway as well. It's not as wide as that one I was just referring to near the auditorium, but we'll also have student desks there to accommodate any overflow or needs that we have for that. So students haven't been informed yet where they're going to be, but that, that's the news and we'll be sharing that with them later on in the week as well.
Great breaking news, Bill.
Yeah.
Uh, so again, um, we've had the opportunity to, uh, walk through the, through the high school together. And, um, Bill has spent an awful lot of time with his custodial staff and with his teachers, just ensuring that we can have, uh, three feet of distancing, uh, between students and then six feet between, uh, students and, uh, teachers. That's something that they've been able to do, um, consistently throughout the building. I think there are a couple, and Bill, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, there are going to be a couple of classrooms that are, that are overflow classrooms that have more than that. Is that correct?
Yeah. So what we have right now, half, the building is divided in half and, um, one half the building is, are where the academic classes are held, net year, year math, English, science, social studies, um, and foreign language, with some others mixed in. And the other half are, we have more of the elective-based courses, art, music, phys ed. In that half, that's the academic piece. They pretty much all have the requisite amount of student desks. All the available or allowed amount of student desks in there right now, which are at the three foot from seat edge, seat edge distance. But we will, as Dr. McColl just referred to, have several classes that have too many students that will be returning and therefore can't fit into what that classroom holds or is able to hold at this time. So we, of course, will take steps. We're in the middle of doing that right now. Where we are, all the assistant principals are in charge of an area of the building and they're going through to make sure that the room has the, the capacity met for the amount of allowable desks inside. But also they're looking at, um, the, the amount of students that will be returning. And if there are less students returning than desks needed, we will grab a couple of those desks for other spaces. And if there are more students returning, we're kind of making a note there and meeting on that tomorrow for a plan or furthering the plan, what we're going to do there. Right now, the plan is that in our media center where you all, uh, know, will be a, um, overflow space. We do have a few teachers that will not be joining us back in the building when we return. They will still be remaining remote. So their classes will be there and being supervised while they teach it remotely, teach them remotely. And also we'll have space reserved for students that, um, will be, uh, overflow from a few of those classrooms. I don't have the final number of how many classrooms that will be as numbers. We just got an updated list of how many kids returning, um, this morning. So we're actively working on that. But, um, if there is an overflow situation, we're hoping that it's one or two students in, in a five or six classrooms, I guess I would say, um, as a guess. So it shouldn't be a tremendous amount of kids, but still problematic. So not only, um, do we have that situation, but we're looking at, can we move that kid that's won over to a different section of this course? Maybe that kind of solves that problem. Can we move that class as a whole to a larger space? We don't have many more larger spaces, but can we do that? I know that's going to work in one of the cases. Um, actually we just switched today to make that work. We're looking in a really drastic situation. I don't want to do this necessarily. Is, can we change a student's schedule to a totally different person? If that was, I, I don't see that being a great option, um, because with seven, eight weeks left of school, it doesn't make sense to change a teacher, um, and a teaching style and, and all that kind of stuff. So that's where we're at with that situation right now.
Great. Thank you, Bill. And yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that would be a challenge, but, uh, the, I know how hard you and, uh, the administrative staff have been working on just ensuring that you do have the proper spaces. So, you know, thank you for that. You know, I did have the opportunity to, uh, hold a town hall meeting with, uh, high school teachers, WRA members. Principal Viano and I, um, and the executive staff all joined in and answered questions and concerns and so forth. And, uh, well attended and, um, you know, again, very well received, uh, all the way around. Bill did mention daily schedules have been finalized.
All right. Sorry. Sorry. I just, I'm pleased with that part, but, um, we're going to go with our typical schedule that we were pre-pandemic, which is, um, a seven block, a six-block day where we have seven courses and you drop one, but they'll rotate every day. Again, it's a very confusing schedule for those that haven't lived it. But it'll be an alternating green and white day and I see Katie kind of smiling there because she can appreciate that as a senior. But that will be the plan. So we will be instituting that starting April 26th. And of course, that's, that's very anxiety provoking for students that haven't been in the building yet this year, certainly for freshmen coming into the building. Back in December, we offered tours for any student that wanted them, any freshman that wanted them. And we, I forget the number, but we did a, a large amount of student tours at that point. And counselors are available and are willing to give individual tours as needed, um, for parents over the next couple of weeks. You know, that's on a case-by-case basis, but certainly that day or the first few days when we're back on April 26th, we'll have, uh, members of the student body, upper class in hallways before school, helping students get to their locations. We'll have staggered dismissal from classes to make sure everybody gets where they need to be. So we'll make sure we take all that into account when we're back. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, I, I think everyone is, Bill. Excellent. Thank you. You know, finally hallways are clearly marked. Um, you know, I know that, uh, Assistant Principal Pratt spent an awful lot of time and went through a lot of tape, uh, marking the hall, the hallways, uh, in the high school. Uh, and then ultimately final plans and adjustments are going to be made, made this week and, uh, Bill will be sending that information out soon. And then again, planning steps that we've kind of gone through, uh, to increase in-person learning at the high school, really maintaining three to six feet of distancing in all learning environments. Students are all wearing masks, high, you know, have to follow the hand hygiene protocols. We put spatial barriers, especially in restrooms, uh, in between sinks, uh, urinals and so forth. We put spatial barriers, especially in restrooms in between sinks, urinals and so forth. Follow detailed cleaning protocols and all ventilation systems are providing at least four or more air exchanges per hour. And we're monitoring CO2 levels as well. And then again, one of the number one things we did, we shifted from six feet of distance to between three feet and six feet. All learning spaces have been, you know, assessed for proper learning or proper spacing, just in general, including the cafeteria, including the gymnasium, all those spaces that Bill just talked about where lunch will occur. We will have the six foot distance between those spaces. Right now, we have about 75% of students coming back and about 25% remaining remote. So that number could go back and forth a little bit, but probably not too much more than that. And then finally, AA transportation is finalizing routes and they should be good to go within the next few days. So we're excited about that as well. Then learning model, I think, Bill, you talked a little bit about this. I don't know if you want to go through a little bit more, but you know, it's the same model as what we've used for the K eight, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, full days, Wednesday is a half day. Same start and end times as a normal school year for the Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, with Wednesday being a half day schedule. And again, we've talked about this, you know, the half day schedule is provided. So the teachers have time to plan for both in-person and remote students. And, you know, ultimately, these remote students who are currently at the high school and at our K in our K eight programs will be able to remain with those teachers for the rest of this particular school year.
Yeah, I guess what I would add there is and certainly have heard it here tonight, but throughout the course of many of the school committee meetings over this year, that our staff have done a tremendous job. And I think that the level of education they're able to provide to our remote students and our in-person students has been impressive, perfect, no, but but they're doing a great job and they're working extremely difficult, hard, you know, they're really putting 110% in. Important to remember here is even though 75% of students are coming back in, 25% are not, and that's 600 kids that could be remote students. So it's really important for us to make sure the focus remains there as well. And that's a challenge, you know, it will be maybe even more challenging than it was or it is now in the next couple of weeks when we have more kids in front of you than what we what we're used to this year. So the staff is prepared for that, I hope. We've been talking about that quite a bit. And I'm asking for them to power through for the next seven, eight weeks and they've been incredibly responsive and I'm very proud of them. So we're looking forward to a good transition to make sure that we're servicing all kids the best we can. We certainly will follow up with communication with our remote students and families and to get their feedback as we've done throughout the course of the year. But, you know, their learning is equally as important as the as the rest of the students. So we'll do our best to make sure that happens.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Couple of other things we wanted to just touch base on, especially with, especially with the high school while Principal Viano was with us right now. So we're going to talk a little bit about the high school graduation and end of the year activities. So again, commencement guidance, this is an actual link and it goes to commencement guidance that was shared with principals, colleges, universities. And it really covers colleges, universities and K 12 schools. And big things that they mentioned, we still have to follow Board of Health guidelines for gatherings. And there are strict regulations on social distancing, guests and more. So I know Bill and I have been talking about this for, you know, at least a month or two. And, you know, Bill, if you want to start to go through some of the different options that we're looking at right now.
Sure. So, so again, I have to give some kudos to members of the administrative team here that have taken on a lot of this, especially Vicky DiSimoni, the senior class administrator, has really worked tirelessly, hoping to give the seniors an incredible send off for them as they enter the next phase of their life. So thank you to her and to the others assisting her, which would also be the student class officers and also the administration, the advisors for the class as well. So I just wanted to mention that. But we've looked at many, many, many options here as we're waiting for DESI guidance and from, you know, Board of Health guidance as well. When we're looking at graduation, last year, we did a virtual graduation. And in the middle of the summer, we did a walk across the stage, which was nice, but it certainly wasn't graduation, at least to the standard we're used to. So this year we are definitely focused on having an in-person graduation for our students and families. With that, as I just mentioned, we've checked and worked with or tried to work with many venues and many options. We are unique. We are very large for a graduating class. We're going to be graduating close to 500 students this year. And with that being said, there's not many facilities that could handle that class size on a regular year, never mind a year where there's all these protocols and constraints. So I think confidently, we're down to three options. It seems like right now for graduation. One of them, we were very fortunate last week to have a contingent of administrators go down to Polo Park and meet with folks there and to look at the options of a potential graduation for our students there. Beautiful facility. And if they're first go through with graduation and what we found is what we originally were thinking is that we would be allowed to have our students sit on the outfield grass and their families would be in the bleachers kind of facing them, facing each other. But some other schools are able to do that. They're in on the ground floor of this. We wouldn't be able to do that. Our students would be in the, I think, first base sideline bleachers and their families would be way over on the third base sideline bleachers. And we would call students down to get their diploma. They would come down onto the the follow territory. They'd have to walk on the follow grounds, the home plate, get their diploma and then walk back up a different route to get back to their seat. You know, you could fit all students in there at once. It would be limited, limited families or guests, and that's going to be the case no matter where we are. But the thing that concerned us there, I guess there were two things that concerned us there, maybe three. One is it's outdoors and the weather is always an issue. Two, we didn't feel if we have to be in the bleachers and not on the center, on the outfield grass, the vantage point for families wasn't great. So we didn't feel that that was the perfect option at this point. So we're still working with them to try to get some feedback on that if we can still kind of get into that outfield grass and so the weather, the field and parking, there's really not great parking right now down there. So we're kind of concerned about that as well. So those are some of the drawbacks, but it's I didn't go, but I hear it's a beautiful facility and it would be memorable, of course, for that. So that's one of the options there and there's pros and cons. The DCU Center, which is where we've been other than last year traditionally for the last, I think, 14 years. And we have, because of the size of our graduating class, we've moved into, I think, five or six years ago into the large hall, which houses on a good day, 14,400 people, but they also have COVID constraints and they have to follow meticulously. And we are back and forth with them as well. And there's, you know, we already have reserved there for June 10th. We would love to be able to have one graduation to get that class together one time that we haven't been able to do. But there's some, some issues there. We're still working with them because they're not 100% concerned, confident in what their protocols will need to be. They know most of them, but they're still working on some seating flow, seating and traffic flows to get back to us. So what, I think one of the major drawbacks there are that we could not fit, they have to have six feet distancing between groups, which means if you are with you and your spouse or a child, you can sit together, obviously, but then you have to be six feet from the next family. So that certainly limits the amount of seating capacity we have there. Typically, in a regular year, we'd have 500 students. What would be the, the the basketball court floor or the ice rink floor, that's where they would sit. Given the current constraints, you can only fit 200 students there. So if we were to do this all at once, you'd have, we would have to have 200 students there and then 300 students in the stands. And then we would allow guests as well. It would be a limited guest as well there, but we're, we're still working there. We have a great relationship with the members of the DCU and we're hoping that that would be a viable option. One of the other options is they do have another date. I believe it's June 13th. If we had to split into two, which wouldn't be the optimal for us, at least in my opinion, and we could potentially do that. You couldn't proceed in, which is a nice addition. It's a nice thing to see all the students marching in just because of the protocols, there's nowhere for them to line up at this point and get them to march in. And if it was, when it was, the graduation was over, half of the students would leave through one exit and the other half would leave through the other where the Worcester Police actually would shut down one of the streets for our kids and families to get together and leave in a, you know, a calm and orderly fashion. So the DCU is a strong, you know, hopeful for us as we keep moving forward. And you have good old Watson, you know, so we're always looking at potentially having the graduation here. But there are some obvious constraints there as well. Our largest, you know, place we could have this would be on the turf field. We have to live by the six feet of distancing with the protocols put forward by the state. So we still would have extremely limited ability to house all of our students and families. And we're talking maybe just two guests. We'd probably have to have three graduations, maybe four. And that's, that's, you would, so I would consider doing since June 10th is our traditional date or the date we already had. I would consider doing June 8th, which would be a Tuesday night, June 9th or Wednesday night and June 10th, a Thursday. You know, you have your fingers crossed for good weather and a lot of other options there, but that to me, it would be a big challenge for the school. And again, we're dividing potentially three and maybe even four graduations there. So that's not as attractive. And we would certainly consider that if we had to, but that's on the list as it's still one of the three that we can do. So that that kind of sums up that part of the graduation. But probably, I don't know, I don't think it's more important for the students, but certainly equally as important are are the senior class and how do they get recognized? And is there any opportunity for them to get together? So we've done some things over the year and trying to have them have a little bit of class pride, a little bit of connection. It's been extremely challenging for them. They, they although last year's class did, you know, suffer through these challenges, this class even more so, you know, they weren't together last year for their junior year activities at the end of the year, whether it be junior prom or what else, you know, just being together with their class and getting to be that transitioning class on campus. It's always a nice little last day of school for seniors and then you see the juniors kind of move into that leadership role the very next day. So it was, it's bad that we didn't get to see that last year. So this class really did miss out on a bunch of things. So we're hoping to do some of the things we did last year for last year seniors, which is more than a regular year, more than a given graduate, graduation year. So we're looking at some of the things that are listed there. You know, we have a 50 day countdown party. We have, you know, every day we post a new number of how many days left for our seniors that are leaving us on May 28th. We are already signed up and we'll have delivered a lawn sign for every senior. We have the rolling rally in place, which we were, we did last year. We're so happy that the, you know, as Dr. McColl referenced a little while ago, the local police officials have been tremendous and they're willing to support this with us once again. And that does, not only did the students love that last year, but but the towns did as well. So it's great that we're going to be able to do that. We have some tentative dates. I didn't put them there because this could change with depending on when graduation happens to fall and some of those other events as well. We're looking, this is the big one. So we cannot have a prom as we've always known them. That is a direct guidance from DESI. You can't. So we're looking to have some type of a senior social. Again, this is kind of not finalized information. So I'm a little nervous about sharing this with students listening and I don't know if they are, but you know, we want to have an event that our kids can get together one last time on in a social aspect and you got to be careful there, obviously. We are held to 150 person capacity to do that. We can't get the senior class together all at once. So we're looking at options of breaking that down into three, four groups of of an event that looks something like we have listed there, but you know, maybe it's one day and every, every group gets two or three hours to get together. You can't mingle, you can't mix those groups together. And it would be, we'd have some music, we would have maybe some food there. We're looking at some miniature golf options, some photo options and things like that. But again, you have to keep all the protocols and everything else in place. And it's not what students want to hear. Sometimes it's not what parents want to hear, but it truly is a challenge for us to to kind of you know, piece something together that we find is worth, you know, how we can, you know, appropriately recognize our students and we're hoping that these things will do it. I know that there's a meeting with the senior class officers, I think it might even be tomorrow to kind of talk through these things. And we want to give them some say on this as well, but we're still waiting Board of Health approval for a lot of this stuff. So we can't really advance much. I know there's people out there, especially our students that are saying, tell us what's going on. But we can't, we can't really commit too much now until we, until we jump through some of those hoops and do the right thing. So I know very long winded there, but
Great. You know what? Thank you, Bill. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to, as you said, the administrative staff, the teachers, senior advisors, the seniors who have gone through this and lived through this as juniors. I know Katie, you mentioned this today during the meeting. You know, where you just said, people are so excited to kind of find out what's going on. So Bill, thank you for sharing that, you know, giving us a preview of how things might work.
Thank you. So I think we in effect have combined the proposed reopening and the graduation year and activities. So we'll open the floor to questions or comments on either of those two items. So I have Ken first.
Just two, two quick things. And Curry, thank you so much for, for all that you've done. And I know this is going to be a huge undertaking. Two thoughts going forward. One, I really encourage central office administration to stand up this pool testing as soon as possible, potentially at the high school where the kids are probably more able to do it. And are a lot more likely to be spreaders as being some of them kind of adults. Whichever school you do it, please stand it up sooner than later, because I think it's important for our reopening. And secondly, I know Bill said that they'll reach out to the, to remote students and, and once the dust settles, I hope that central office can provide some support in really doing some meaningful surveys and focus groups to figure out why are these 600 kids not here, you know, and are you coming back next year? We've talked in the past few meetings about these, you know, now the single district virtual school and how challenging DESI is perhaps making that to do that. But I just worry that we have 600 kids remote for some reason. What those reasons are, there are things we can learn from that. And if it's reasons they might want to continue remote learning or virtual learning, we're going to lose them to virtual schools. If we can't provide some remediation to whatever reason it is, they're not coming back now if it's not just the pandemic. So I don't know if those are questions, but if you have anything.
Let me, I can, can address the pool testing. So we're looking to have that. You know, just a real quick couple of days trial, probably at the high school when we come back on the 26th. And then it's, it's ready to go. So we'll be, we'll be starting there and then expanding throughout the rest of the district, probably that week. So you know, we have the materials, we're, we're ready to jump into that. The second question around the, you know, why, why do we still have 600 students, 25% of those, you know, freshmen, sophomore, juniors and seniors who've decided to remain remote? That's a number that we're seeing and I'm hearing from a lot of superintendents that we're seeing a lot of juniors and seniors in particular, saying, hey, you know what? We want to still, we just want to stay remote. You know, it's, it's almost like they're getting prepared for college because that's how a lot of colleges have gone. But we do have the opportunity to do some outreach to families about this because I'm also concerned about that. And you know, you know, ultimately, we don't want to lose these students to TCA, to, you know, the virtual schools you know, for a year or two, because even that, we're going to lose funding for them. So again, we're, we're looking at how we can do that.
Thank you. I have Carl next.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. So first question, you at least kind of alluded to, but so the 25% at the high school, are we seeing? I was going to ask, is it kind of evenly spread across all four grades or is it tilted much heavily towards the juniors and the seniors?
If I can answer, yeah, certainly juniors and seniors are heavier than the freshmen sophomores.
Okay. And then second question, so graduation, specifically like the high school grad and for the high school graduation. And I guess a broad question beforehand really, but are these kind of the same kind of rules that apply for like the middle school graduations? Because we didn't, we're not explicitly talking about that, but like in terms of having it outdoors and like being able to space things out and like, because I've had some folks reach out and say like, well, we did a drive through graduation last year because it was kind of necessary, but we don't, we'd prefer not to like, if we've got space outdoors and we can meet the six feet of spacing between families, prefer to do it that way. And so.
Right. So yes, that the, the documentation that came out, the guidance, as I said, covers colleges, universities and K 12. So any type of kind of promotion, because it's not really graduation for eighth grade. It's more like promotion between eighth grade and ninth grade. We just always want to differentiate between high school graduation and eighth and ninth grade promotion. There are the same requirements around spacing, social distancing, number of people who are allowed in a certain amount of space. So that is all there. Carl, we're going to be talking with building principals, with middle school principals about this this coming week, but it is something that's But it is something that's on our radar as well. We do want to focus on the high school to make sure we're getting that down completely as well. So we'll, we'll share with you some of that information in the future.
And, and then just, so question kind of clarifying like with the high school though. So if we were to have, so thinking of the field, the football field, if we wanted to put all 500 down on the field, not parents, not anything like that. So if it was a 500 person gym class, we could have them out there, the students out there sitting three feet apart. Correct?
That's correct.
Yes, that is correct.
So there, is there a reason why we couldn't have just the students three feet apart in the infield? And then try and work on spacing parents, family members out around it?
So the, the guidances, I, I reviewed this today because I had that same question, Carl. The guidance real is really specific. It says six feet.
So the guidance says six feet between groups. It doesn't say six feet between students. So if that is an option, it certainly would probably be pretty good at least to look at and see if we could make something work that way. And it, it might be more challenging because it says six feet between individuals or household groups where possible. So if we can swing it that it's only the students, the state's already said three feet for students is just fine. So maybe we, maybe we might be able to be creative and work something out with this, that we get all of them together. It might be a little trickier for the parents and the family members, but we might have an option there.
I like that interpretation. I think the, the other thing that we have to take, take into consideration, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, is just the, the, the number of people who were allowed in that particular space at one time, correct?
Yeah, no, it's more, it's more the, the, for open school-based graduations, there really isn't a huge cap on the amount of people you can have. That's more for arenas, not necessarily for that. But it does come down to how many can you fit? Because if you're six feet distance, and I'm trying to remember because we had to do this for last year, you can really only fit on, on the large side of our bleachers, which, you know, we'll call it the home side for lack of a better term. I believe it was only 250 or so folks there. And you couldn't fit anywhere near, I think we're looking at 150 students or 125 students at once on the field because of that distancing at that time. I, you know, I did look through and it does say, I, I was interpreting it as six feet between students, but it does say while they're waiting in line. So maybe there, there's, you know, a difference as they're sitting, but you're right, they're sitting three feet apart in the building, which is less, you know, it's not open air. So, you know, then you come down to, is, is there a visual, you know, can you see your child if, where are they facing? How do you do all that? But, but that's stuff we would encounter, we'd have to figure out.
Thank you. I have Mike Pantos next.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. Bando for being a part of this meeting. I appreciate it. I would say the rolling rally last year, I know was a spectacle for everyone in my neighborhood, the whole town. It seemed pretty excited to have that going on. So I'd encourage the district to do that again. Do we, a few questions. One is can upperclassmen, if they, say they drive to school, are they allowed to eat in their cars? Is that an option for lunch?
If I can answer, no, it's not. No.
May I ask why?
We can't supervise them. We're not sure that are comfortable that they'd be alone in cars. There's a lot of things, masks off. We've, I've talked to a bunch of other schools that they spend their day chasing cars because there are multiple kids in cars. We just would rather avoid that. And I'm not a fan of cars driving off campus in the middle of the day too.
I just meant sitting for seating reasons. The other thing was, so we said 75% in person. As who's opted for in-person full-time, do we have an understanding as to why it was not originally 50, why it's not 50%, which I know is what, what it was in hybrid?
Not sure. I understand why did it increase? Is that what you're asking?
So before, in hybrid, we had 50% of students opt for in-person, 50% or 50% opt for hybrid, 50% opt for fully remote. Do we have an understanding as to the reasoning behind why we've increased to 75%?
I, I can kind of give a thought. I, I think that students and families find it more worthwhile to commit to longer school days and more school days. I think they, that percentage of students or families just felt that, you know, going to school for the two days for half days, that, you know, just to assume keep the student home and not have to have any kind of worry. I can only speculate that I don't know that to be the case, but.
Okay. Yeah. I just wanted to hear because I, I know I was under the impression that it would stay at the 50/50. So thank you. The other question I have is for what about, I don't know if this is relevant, but what about students that have opted to have gone off to private school and want to come back to the high school? What is their, what is the protocol for that?
They live in our district, they come to the main office and we sign them back in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken next.
Yeah, thank you. A few questions. Daryl, one, one of them is going to be for you and, and have, you know, we kind of all smirked a little bit saying that the children are allowed to be three feet apart in classes for seven hours a day. Yet we're not allowed to get them closer than six feet for whether it's a prom or a, a graduation. Have we gotten any more clarification from Desi on, on understanding that the, kind of almost the bipolar nature of, of that directive? You know, kids on the bus are probably even closer than three feet, right? So I, you know, one question is, is I know you talked to the, to the, to the chair many times. Have we gotten any clarification why there's, there's such a difference?
So Ben, that, that just came out last week. So we have not had a meeting with the commissioner. I have one on Wednesday afternoon. So we will be discussing that with him at that time.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess the other one is, I kind of to, to expand on Carl's comment a little bit, you know, I understand that there's a lot of effort that needs to go into the, to the graduation at the high school. But each one of the schools is pretty much its own entity as it, as it relates to its, its ceremonies. So is the plan to let the, the school principals and the local boards of health to kind of determine what's best? As long as it, it's following the guidelines or is this something you're viewing more as, you know, a district type of guidance to each one of the schools?
So that's what we're going to talk to building principals about, Ben, because, you know, ultimately we're all, we, we always walk that fine line between, you know, of individualism. You know, so each school has its own, you know, sense of self and commonality and consistency throughout the district. So again, we always want to be careful with how we do things. So we'll, we'll have that conversation. I know principals are already talking about this or they've already kind of put out some ideas around, you know, how this might work, what might happen. The guidance just came out last week for graduation. So it's really, it is something, that's why I'm telling you, high schools have been thinking about this for a long time and they've been pushing for the guidance. I think now that we're looking at this for, you know, eighth grade, you know, let's say, you know, what we want to do is just ensure we're all on the same page in terms of how it plays out. And you mentioned a good point, each board of health is its own entity. So they do look at things a little differently, even though we meet with them, I just met with them today. We're, you know, we're on the same page with 95% of, of things that we do. But each one has its own kind of, I guess, perspective associated with the community in which they represent. So.
Thank you.
Linda Long-Balil. Linda, are you there? We'll come back to Linda. Melissa?
Hi, um, maybe I'm going to be unpopular vote, but just out of the, regarding the graduation. Is it, is it difficult to do two different graduations? Say you do, do it at the field at what you sit. If you were able to split it in half, is that a hard thing to do? I just, I worry about indoor graduation, thinking about all those people like at the DCU center and even trying to space. But I graduated in, from Worcester, big class DCU, and I imagine what it was like with everybody there. And I can, it's just, it's a little scary to think that we're going to try to do that. I, 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 again, unpopular vote probably, but I, I would see it more intimate having a couple graduations. Your family members would be able to see you more, maybe more family members be able to go. Just an opinion. I don't know, something to think about, but.
I can comment if you wish.
Yeah, please.
I think it's challenging to run one graduation at the high school. I guess I'll say that. But, but I also think that being at both places, the DCU has been much better visually. You have not only better seating, but you also have the large, I forget what it's called up top, where you can actually see really well, see your child really, really well as, as they cross the stage. I worry that our ability to see at the, on campus would be a problem, but also you have weather issues and you have, you'll be able to fit more people at the DCU, but you're still not going to fit probably much more than what we have in this building every day. So I, I would suggest that the spacing there will be even better than we have in school because they're following very stringent protocols of six feet distancing where we're doing three. So I, I would think, I understand the whole indoor, and I, I have to be honest and maybe, you know, I defer to Katie and all the other students, but I think getting together as a class one time is kind of that icing on the cake. Again, what we'll do, we have to do, but that's kind of what we're looking forward to is the, you know, we came in as mountaineers, we want to leave together as mountaineers.
And, and I think, Bill, you hit the nail on the head. I think having them all together, Melissa, is really the goal. It would be great to have the class together in some form or fashion. And you were talking about a jumbotron. I think that's the other thing. That's, it's great to, you know, see your, your child walk, you know, across the stage and being able to see it live and up on the screen.
All right, I have Malia next.
Okay, um, I hit a couple of things. Since you just talked about graduation, I'll start there and go backwards. I am conflicted about that. I'll be honest. I think outside is theoretically a good thing because there are still a lot of family members. I think of that 25% of students that are not in buildings right now. Is it because of their, they or their family members being immunocompromised or not able to be in a building? Is, are they, do they have relatives that will not be able to attend? So I just think of, I don't know if that's a decision maker, but I hope that those students are also taken into account and making a decision to bring that many people in a building at once, because there are still a lot of people who may not be comfortable with that. I don't know if that would involve a survey of some sort. I also know in past years, we've had a lot of, maybe not here, but we've had a lot of questions about even with the larger graduation, how many tickets people can get? And, and if people are having to space that much far apart, would they be okay with having only a few guests per family? Because there are still spacing issues. So I guess I just would want to make sure those things are, obviously I'm not on the committee. I trust you all to figure it out. But I just hope that those 25% of the students and their, and their families needs, I think of grandparents who maybe, you know, have to travel here and then have to quarantine. You still have those guidelines. So I just, I hope that, that the needs of that 25% is also taken into account when you're talking about that many people under a building, because a lot of people still aren't entirely comfortable with that at this phase of things. So I trust you to figure that out. I hope it goes well. I would strongly support the rolling rally. I hope that actually continues past COVID. I thought that was an incredible community event last year. I love being able to go out. I don't have a high school senior, but I love being able to go out and support them all. And I think a lot of people felt the same way. My other question was about pool testing. So I don't know if I should bring that up now since it already came up. I wondered, you mentioned starting it at the high school. Was there any consideration given to starting it at perhaps one of the middle schools that's already in session, already used to being in the building? And also a smaller group of students than the high school, just as a pilot, either right before break or right after. But it's a smaller group, but still students old enough to handle the logistics of it themselves or, or help. I, I just a question, I guess, logistically, that if we could start it sooner by piloting in a middle school and working out the kinks before we have 1,400 high school kids in the building, that might be a thought.
So yeah, Malia, we're, you, one of the reasons why we're hitting the high school up first is because you, as we look at students who are a little older, 16, 17, 18, I'm a little more concerned about, not that I'm not concerned about the health associated with the younger kids, but those, those are the kids who are typically getting this. And the effects, the, and the side effects can be a little bit worse than it can be for younger kids. So we are.
I mean, I'm not going to argue the public health of that. I know I've seen.
Oh, I know. I understand that. But yeah, we're, we're looking to get it in, into the high school and then ultimately into the rest of the schools ASAP as well.
I was, I was more thinking of just piloting the logistics in a smaller setting rather than 1,400 kids. And I know some of our middle schools are, you know, like Malview's half that size, but a smaller group to pilot it in versus 1,400 kids who are new to a building and new schedules and things to get the logistics down of how you actually do it. But I, I'll trust you all to figure it out.
Can I just comment? I don't know that grandparents will be at graduations, no matter where we hold them, unfortunately. It's just the, the limitations that are going to be in place this year.
Well, I appreciate that. I honestly, I, I think that's important to say because I think most families just assume that would be the case. So I think that's helpful.
Yeah, looking at the ability to stream as well. So hopefully that will work.
Thank you. I've, we'll try Linda Long-Balil again.
Okay, now I'm able to unmute. Thank you. So, uh, thank you very much for your presentation, Principal Bando, and for all the hard work you and everyone at the high school has been putting in. I've been hearing from the parents of seniors who really want an in-person graduation this year. So I'm really pleased to hear that you're pursuing different options to make that possible. And I really, thank you, Mr. Atmar, for your very creative interpretation of the guidelines. I think, I think definitely there's some flexibility called for there. I would agree that if at all possible, an outdoor graduation is a far better option than an indoor graduation from a safety perspective. And so I, I think it would be better for people to get, to get rained on than to risk getting COVID. So, so I would, I would definitely urge that we pursue those options to the extent possible. But I'm really delighted to hear that you're contemplating an in-person graduation and actively working on it. And I love the rolling rally idea. I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Christina.
Thank you. Principal Bando, thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciated hearing all that information. I do have a question about the lunchtime. I think I heard you say that some kids might be eating in the bleachers. And I didn't mean, I didn't know if it was the bleacher section with chairs or if actually in the bleachers.
It's in, well, it's first of all, it's in the gym. So I want to make sure I'm clear. It's not on the turf field. So that, that's the first, it's in the gym. And a big chunk of our gym is being taken up already with study halls. And so the only available space I have is actually the physical bleachers themselves.
So with that, I'm just thinking about the droplets that are produced when people eat and talk and how they fall. And are they sitting in tiered seating? Cause that's concerning to me if they are.
They'll be six feet apart and they will be, it is tiered, but they'll be skipping rows. We're not going to be behind.
Okay. So you've taken that. I just want to make sure when I heard you say bleachers, you've taken all that into consideration. With that in mind, especially that situation, which I'm sure your, you and health department and nurses have done everything to minimize risk. I know Desi in the original guidance suggested seating charts, just in case contact tracing, where eating is a higher risk activity where kids are unmasked. I hope especially for that group of students in particular, where there is a little bit of a higher risk because of that tiering possibility that we just kind of keep that in mind. Although I think in most schools, it's probably not how COVID is spreading at lunchtime. It's probably coming from, I don't, I think it's probably coming from outside activities, but just in case, especially just being a little selfish. My children are in that grade. So I'm a little concerned about the junior population. I think you would be eating, said eating in the bleacher area. So, but thank you for all of your work. I really appreciate this. I know it's no small undertaking.
You're welcome. If I can just, and I know that you're, you probably have a little bit more of understanding maybe than, than the general population for how the lunches work with us because your children are there. But, and it does change every day. So it's hard to have assigned seating. But what we'll, what we will have is QR codes. So every time a student goes on that bleacher, it'll be marked with a QR code where they touch it. And then also all the tables, everywhere they sit. So we will be able to do contact tracing as a result.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Kate next.
Um, okay. Well, Mr. Bando, that just gave me a new question. So if I, if I'm using a QR code, do I guess use my phone at lunch?
Kate, don't put me on the spot like that, please. Come on.
I have longer questions if you'd like.
Oh, that, that's one of my pet peeves. I hate that we have students, um, or the possibility of students using phones at lunch because I want them to communicate. But this year, we're actually telling you that you can't. So we're going to let you use your phones at lunch.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We don't want you talking to your neighbor, unfortunately. Um, so that's what we got to do.
It's okay. I really appreciate that. So that was a bright part of my day. Thank you for that, Mr. Bando. Um, next, are we still having studies in the gymnasium during lunch?
We are, we have to. And, and obviously it wouldn't be for fourth lunch because that's when those students would be at lunch. But, um, yeah, I have to do it. We need that space.
Um, so then during fourth lunch, are we going to let students sit on the chairs or the desk?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, that's good to know. Um, and then just in regards to graduation, um, I think as a member of the senior class, I think it's really important for me to just first thank Ms. De Simone because she's been fantastic. She gets millions of emails a day from parents, students, whatever it might be. Um, all concerned or stressed or whatever it might be about, um, graduation or any of the senior class events. Um, and she's done a fantastic job with all of that, um, and just like mitigating that. Um, I do think it's important that some of these events are whole class events. Um, I, and it's, I think that we're in a lose-lose situation this year, as hard as it is for me to say as a senior, none of these options are going to fulfill to the extent that I saw my graduation being as I was a kindergarten nurse, when I was a freshman, watching my brother watch across this, walk across the stage and um, it saddens me to know that like I might be saying to, you know, like my brother, he can't come to graduation. Um, but I think, um, do the best you can. And I think that's all we, that's all we can really ask for at this point. So I do want to thank everyone for, um, their time and dedication and making, putting this all together, especially in the midst of a pandemic where we're changing remote models every um, two months or so. And so I do want to thank everyone for their time and, um, dedication to that.
Thank you. I got Sherry next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bando, for that thorough presentation. I appreciate it. Uh, most of my questions have been addressed, but I wanted to bring up two points. Um, first, I'm, I'm okay with the, the D C U graduation. I'm okay with them being inside uh, spaced because I think that their spacing is going to be bigger than ours. Um, the other thing to consider is that so many more people will be vaccinated by then. Um, you know, even that Rutland Drive-Thru Clinic that's coming up in a couple of weeks, you know, 6,000 more. So I hope many people can get there. Um, generally I'm a person who looks forward and not back, but I have to ask. Uh, we went from 50% of the kids in school to 75% and all of a sudden we can fit them in for lunch that we couldn't fit them in before. And I need to know why.
Are you asking me or asking?
Um, Daryl?
It's my place to answer that, but.
Well, it's, why, why we couldn't fit it?
Yeah, it was made very clear that we couldn't fit them in and we were going to have to have six lunches. It didn't make sense. I just don't understand. So, I mean, I'm, I think it's great that we're doing it. And don't get me wrong. I just, I don't know why we couldn't fit 50% of the kids in for lunch and now we have 75% of the kids in and we can fit them. So if you guys figured out new spaces or things got moved around or simply because we're going from three feet to six, uh, six feet to three feet in the classrooms, now we don't have to use the gyms for, for lunch, uh, you know, for classroom space anymore. I mean, if that's the case, that's great. I just.
I guess I can.
Just trying to understand.
Sure. I guess first of all, I would say my comfort level would be greater to not have lunch. Let me, let me start with that, you know, so, so I would say that. So I don't make the decision whether we return or not, and I, I have to work with the decision that's made. Um, I do believe what your last statement was is absolutely has a big part in this. I can use that gym now because those students can leave. Um, and with them freeing up that big space, sitting on a bleacher is not ideal at all. And that's not where we, we thought to go. But once we had to do this, that's, that's the option that we took. Um, I don't have another space to put kids to eat lunch. Um, I was hoping, we were originally thinking of having them eaten outside. But then as I sat here and watched all the geese out there, I said, oh, that's not going to be a good spot there, you know? So there's, there's a lot of other things that limit us to what we can do. So to me, i- it is truly that that space freed up, uh, to some degree. And that, um, we were given the green light to allow, allow us to use that space as well without desks and, and whatnot. So, um, that, that's where, where from my point of view, where, where the decision got made.
A- and I, I agree, using, using the, um, the bleachers is really the only way that we could do this. Um, because otherwise there are no other spaces available and there weren't any spaces available, um, prior to this as well.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on high school reopening or end of year activities? It sounds like, um, you know, the only thing that I think was, was left to do in your presentation was, was bus routes. Are there any other threshold items that, that need to be done in order, um, for us to call the 26 done? Or are we, uh, are we, are we there?
I think we're there. Um, you know, Bill and his team, they've done a fantastic job just getting everything prepared. Um, bus routes, uh, I believe, you know, will be ready, you know, within the next couple of days. Um, you know, we also have a week in between, so that's, that's helpful for pulling some stuff together if we need to pull some, uh, final items together. As Bill mentioned, you know, looking at some classroom spaces still, finalizing some of those items, but, um, I, I probably, Bill, you're probably 95, 96% there, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we have some work to do. We certainly have to figure out some, some of those, those smaller things we just talked about, but also some of the bigger things are, we are, we talked about half of the school having the appropriate amount of desks and the other school, the other half still doesn't. So where we're getting some desks delivered, those rooms will be set up, um, over breaks. That kind of puts us in a little bit of crunch time there, but, um, we'll get it done and it will be ready for it. But I think just the sharing of information at this point is one of the bigger things we got to get done.
Great, great. Thank you. And thank you, Bill, for joining us tonight. Um, appreciate the flexibility. All right, uh, moving on, the next item we have under the superintendent's report is the deputy superintendent, uh, interview process. I'll turn it up to Daryl for that. Daryl, I think you're on mute.
I apologize. Let me just present my screen. So we've, um, put out the deputy superintendent, um, job, um, prospects, uh, that has been posted on school spring, gosh, I think two weeks ago now. Um, interviews will begin the last week of April. Thus far, we have 26 applicants, um, who've applied. Um, our, our goal would be to have a first round of interviews, uh, with six to eight applicants. Um, interview team will consist of, uh, administrators. So we'll have some central office administration. We'll have, um, representation from, uh, building principal administration. We'll also have, um, probably two to three teachers representing elementary, middle high, um, if possible, and then a school committee member or two, um, as well to give, uh, their feedback. Final interviews will be cut, conducted the first week of May, uh, so that's the week of May 3rd. And again, that interview team will be a little smaller. We, you know, make that, uh, you know, because we're probably only looking at two to three final candidates. Uh, so, um, small number of administrators, a school committee member or two, and then ultimately a decision will be made on, um, of a final appointment by May 7th. And, um, you know, we will put something out to offer up the position to somebody, hopefully at that time. So that's where we're at with that. What, what I will be doing is, uh, reaching out to, um, school committee members or through Chair Dennis, um, to ask for volunteers to sit on, uh, the two interview committees. Again, we only need a couple of people, so we don't need four or five, we're just, uh, one or two ultimately, uh, but that would be helpful for us, uh, moving forward.
Yeah. So I'll ask, uh, with that in mind, if, um, there's anyone on the committee that has an interest on, on serving on the interview, um, committee, just to drop me a note. Um, and we'll go forward in that way. Um, any questions or, um, discussion on the interview process?
Can we clone Bob Burlow?
It depends on which version you're cloning, the retiring version or the non-retiring version.
I'll take the non-retiring version, but, or both.
All right. Um, with nothing else, uh, we'll move on to superintendent evaluation. So what we'll do here is, um, we'll take this in two parts. Um, you know, under superintendent discussion, um, we'll give Daryl an opportunity to talk about, um, his, uh, self-evaluation, um, and, uh, the evidence that he's put forward. I believe he sent something out just prior to, to this meeting. And, um, under the, um, subcommittee reports, uh, we'll just talk a little bit, you know, very briefly about the, the process, the tool, uh, and the timeline. Um, Malia, you have a point of order?
I do. Can I make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30? So we don't have to interrupt this.
Okay, point of order to extend the meeting to 10:30 is to have a second.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Uh, Randy, can you call the roll? This is a motion to extend to 10:30.
Mal, um, Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember? Member Kirschenbaum?
Kirschenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell? Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Pantos?
Pantos, no.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva? Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Sullivan? Member Sullivan? Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
So thank you for that. And with that, we'll turn it over to Daryl.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, so what I'd like to do is, um, quickly, just kind of give you a, a brief overview of what was shared with you this evening in terms of my, uh, evaluation narrative. Um, just kind of an overview of what's in the document, uh, that you'll be using. And, um, Chair Dennis, I've also put together, uh, some slides at the end. Uh, if you want to talk, I wasn't sure whether or not Member Lavoy would be here, but if you want to talk through the timeline for this, uh, we have that available as well. So what I'll do is share my screen again. So what was shared this evening with you is, uh, my evaluation narrative. Um, basically gives you, uh, an overview of, um, what I've done this year in terms of actions, not only toward goals, but uh, everyday actions that, uh, have, you know, really been ongoing, uh, since, uh, this pandemic has been going on as well as, uh, everything else that we've been living through. But, um, four standards that were chosen um, by the subcommittee and myself as we, we looked at my goals included, um, instructional leadership. Uh, those are, um, indicators A and B, management and operations are indicators A and C. Family and community, uh, engagement, which is B and D and professional culture, C and D. And what we have is that under each one, there, if we click on this, this is the superintendent's evaluation rubric. So what's nice is that there are hyperlinks throughout this document and this actually shows you, um, the standards, the indicators, uh, and the elements that go along with, uh, what you're looking at in terms of, um, some of my goals and, uh, evaluation items. So that's built right into the document itself. That's on the bottom of every page. Then there's also the online evaluation questionnaire. Uh, when you click on that, you'll be asked a fellow information, um, through, right through that document as well. And, um, I'm not sure if Barry wants to talk, talk about that, um, because Matt is not here this evening. Um, you know, I'm not sure where we'll go with it, but we'll leave it at that. Again, there's a table of contents. The table of contents gives you basically everything that I talk about, uh, throughout the rest of the document. So the first part is a quick introduction and then go through kind of the COVID-19 response, how we've kind of gone through, uh, the, you know, since last July, you know, ultimately the past nine, 10 months. Um, and what we've been, what we've been doing, what I've been doing, uh, as leader of the district. Uh, so we talked about the remote learning model, uh, the hybrid learning model, the full in-person learning model. A little bit about, um, the vaccinations of our staff. I go through, um, FY21 grants, talk about FY22 budget. Uh, ultimately the vision for the school year. And then I have my goals and under each goal, there's a link. So if you click right on, uh, this area where the goal is, that will bring you directly down to the, to the goal in the document. So you don't have to scroll through if you just want to come back to this. And under each one of the goals, there's also, uh, links, not links, but, um, tied back to standards, uh, that go back to what the goals, um, you know, are actually doing and which standards apply to those goals. So if you go down, um, each page kind of has that breakdown. As you go through the document, please note that there are hyperlinks built into the document. So if you click on, uh, the CDC link, that will bring you to a CDC, uh, website. If you click on, uh, the initial recommendation report from the task force, that brings you directly to, uh, the recommendation, uh, report from the task force. That is, um, that's part of the entire document. And you'll note that, um, through some of these paragraphs, you'll also see this particular item applies to standards to A and C as well as three B and D. So I tried to tie those back in as well for people so that you could see, even though it wasn't necessarily a goal, actions that I still had during and made during, uh, the school year did apply back to, uh, the standards that we were looking at uh, collectively as, uh, an evaluation subcommittee as well. So again, the document has all of these items, um, built in, a lot of hyperlinks throughout the document. And one, and I try not to make people sick as I scroll through this. Um, there, um, is information pertaining to all of the grants. There is also information pertaining to the budgets or FY22 budget, which includes, um, all of the breakdown by appropriations, which was shared with, uh, our five towns and school committee. Uh, also vision for the school year. Goals, this actually, this link brings you to the four goals, my actually goal, the goal worksheet that was created and approved by school committee. Each goal has, uh, items associated that tie back to links as well as evidence. So as you go through the goals, you'll note that there is evidence tied back to each one of the goals. Um, and again, this goal is a little, that first goal was a little longer in terms of, uh, the amount of information that was in there. Um, as you kind of scroll back down through, there's information still pertaining to all the goals, survey information about the surveys that have been sent out. And finally, um, the last, you know, there's also other important, uh, information associated with my evaluation, but at, at the very end are hyperlinks associated with all the reference materials that are, uh, within the confines of the, um, document itself. So all of that is, um, ready to go. You have a PDF version. So even in the PDF version, which is what you're looking at right now, all of these items are live. So if I click on, let's say, school reopening plan, that will bring us right to the school reopening plan that is, uh, on our website. So I'm going to stop right there.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so, uh, like I said, we will, we'll take up the, the mechanics and the timeline of it in a moment, but, um, any questions or, um, discussion on, um, on what's been presented or, uh, on, on the self-evaluation and evidence, um, that's been presented to date? Seeing done, then maybe what we'll do is, um, just take an item out of order, um, and, and go to the, um, superintendent, superintendent evaluation subcommittee, um, uh, report and just talk about the mechanics, a little bit of that. Um, there was, um, some instruction that, um, that I've sent out and some guidance, um, in an email, uh, this weekend. But I think what I'd like to do first is give, um, uh, Linda Woodland an opportunity as the vice chair, um, to share any thoughts or instructions, and I certainly have some, uh, that I can provide as well.
Um, so just, uh, bear with me. I wasn't expecting to be giving the, doing this portion of. So just bear with me, I wasn't expecting to be giving the, doing this portion of the meeting. But basically what we've been working on in the superintendent goals and evaluation subcommittee, after some reorganization ourselves. We've been talking about how to make the instructions a little bit clearer for when it comes to time for the full sub, the full school committee. So one of the pieces that we wanted to highlight was about the amount of time that it takes for doing this evaluation. It's one of the core functions of the school committee. So the evaluation is released now. The tool should be opening up for the school committee, I believe tomorrow. And we'll be closing April 23rd is what I have now. And then after that, the members of the subcommittee will collate the sections and basically put all members' comments together and scores together and then discuss as a subcommittee. And eventually it will go through our chair, who will present the final report to the full committee. So one of the other aspects that we talked about was the importance of comments. I believe officially, if you're rating proficient, you don't necessarily have to have a comment, but they are helpful when putting together a full view of the evaluation to make sure that your voice as a school committee member is heard and can be part of that final narrative. And let's see, I think those were the, the main two pieces. And then, I don't know, Chair Dennis, if there's anything else that would be, you'd want me to highlight or, or what, otherwise I'm ready to pass it back to you.
Sure, no, thanks. No, that was great. I think you covered a couple of key points and logistics. And so, you know, as Linda said, you know, time is certainly one of them. There's, there's a lot of information here. So there's information that the superintendent has provided that, 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 you know, we will look to go through. So everyone has the opportunity of filling an individual evaluation. And that tool, it's, it's being done as a Google Doc, you know, we've used that the last few years. I think it's been helpful to facilitate the process. As Linda mentioned, will be made available tomorrow. And then the time that's open for filling that out is from the 13th to the, to the 23rd. So just in terms of process, what happens from there? The information is aggregated and it's done in subcommittee. And then, you know, ultimately, a composite evaluation will be written. And we'll have a meeting right now scheduled for May 5th, where we will deliver and vote to deliver that composite evaluation. A couple of other points that were, were sent out, you know, in terms of, or just to reemphasize one that Linda made. You know, there's a ratings aspect of this, and then there's a comments aspect of this. And as we discussed in, in our subcommittee, is that the comments, regardless of the rating, is, is much, much more valuable, both to the superintendent and to us as a committee to understand, you know, where, where you're, you're coming from, but also to provide rich feedback. And, and the individual evaluations will be made available to everyone. I will be made available to the superintendent. You know, the other thing that, that I didn't mention is that we did have, although I mentioned in my email, Glenn Kuchar from MASC come down and, and, and give us some, some best practices. And so, you know, the, the note about comments, it falls in line with that blocking time. But also to look for evidence to support your ratings. And so that's why Darrell's put together what he has to indicate what's, what's listed as standards and substandards in the rubric. You know, there are some, some sections there that give an idea of, well, you know, what is proficient look like for this particular substandard? What does exemplary look like? So that's something that you'll want to refer to. And then in the, the final item was, you know, sometimes there's some questions around, well, how do I roll these things up? If I have substandards that I rated one rating and another substandard, where I rate a different rating, and then what do I pick for the, the standard? Or what do I pick for the overall? And, and the guidance here is really, there's no, there's no magic answer. There's no formulaic answer, I guess is probably the best way to say it. But, but to use your judgment, determine what you think weighs heaviest or is provides, or is most, most important. And to the extent that you can, you can tell us that, then, then mention it. I think it's, it's helpful as we go through and go through the task of trying to aggregate 21 members' individual comments and responses. So with that, there will be the rubric or the evaluation tool that will be open tomorrow. We'll just memorialize in writing some of those instructions as well as a timeline. And we'll open that up and start the process. Any questions or discussions on that?
Mike, I have a logistical question.
Okay.
Sorry, I had a delay on my computer, so I'm sorry if you, I went out of order. My quick question is that I know in years past, there was a, because it is so time consuming, you could stop and restart and go back to the evaluation tool. Is that still the case this year? Or do we have to do it all in one sitting?
Is Barry online?
Yes, I am, but I don't know the answer to that. Let me, you're talking about saving your progress on the form? I know it's, I know it's a feature that is available, but I haven't used it yet.
Yes, I recall. I mean, I know I did this in the past because one of them I did while stranded in an airport for 24 hours. And so I had a lot of starts and stops. And I, I did. So I just, I wondered, I found it personally kind of useful to be able to do that because sometimes you get interrupted and you hate to lose work if you are leaving comments. But again, I, I just was checking on that logistical question.
I, well, if you were able to do it last time, I suspect you'll be able to do it this time. You can also go back and edit your responses at any time before, before it closes. So.
Okay. So maybe that's what I did. I don't remember.
Before the instructions go out and we can, we can instruct people on how to do that.
Thank you for checking.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into recommendations requiring action by the school committee, identity and a motion to approve the 2021-22 school calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll open for discussion. Actually, maybe before we open for discussion, Darrell, if you can kind of walk us through, give us a brief overview of the calendar. Sure. So again, thank you, Chair Dennis. One of the things that we wanted to do this year was, you know, as we've talked through the concept of having parent guardian teacher conferences a little more regularly, especially at the middle school level. It's something that we've talked about for many years and we're attempting to put forth some times that allow us to do that this year. So we did talk with the teachers' union about this. So one of the big differences with this calendar is that you'll note that there are still half-days associated with PD. And the expectation is not that teachers would go home on those half-days because I think some people that had that question had asked out of me before. But this year coming up is going to be like a, a traditional school year moving forward. But November 2nd would be a day that we put aside for our conferences as well as a half-day Wednesday afternoon. We do not have enough time for some of our schools to get through and really meet with parents in a manner where, you know, we have some teachers that see 110, 120 students. So we did want to, you know, allow them the opportunity to at least talk with parents, have parent guardians come into the school. There would still be the possibility for some remote, as I think everyone's a little more comfortable with that now than they were maybe two or three years ago. But that's really the major change for us in terms of what we looked at for this particular calendar. And I think it's a step forward. It's something that most districts do, where they have time set aside for parent guardian conferences. And I, I really feel as though it's a step forward for us.
Thank you. I have Ken.
That's great. And I appreciate that. The past four years, I couldn't display my crankiness with the calendar. But now that I'm just a member and not chair, I can be cranky for a moment. We, I threw together an ad hoc subcommittee a couple of years ago to look at like vacations. And I know that was kind of a mixed bag. I do think we were, we were forced to be creative this year, right? With all these crazy changes to the calendar. I hope that going forward, we can use that creative energy to, to address the ridiculously early time that our high school starts, which I know the subcommittee looked at. It, for a brief time, and Kate might smile at this, was reasonable when they were remote. And now it's back to not following the scientific guidelines for when high school students should really be starting. We've shown we can be creative when we have to. I think we have to, in my just one-person opinion, follow the science at some point and really do something about this. So I may vote no just as a like stake in the grounds to my crankiness about this. I appreciate what you've done otherwise with the calendar, but I just throw that out there.
All right, I have Sherry next.
I don't remember seeing in years past the differences in the start and end dates for kindergarten. I was hoping you could explain that.
Sure. So that's new. Remember, kindergarten does not have a true amount of time that they have to be in school because it's, it's voluntary. It's really one through 12 where you run into that issue. So what we have now are opportunities for teachers at the end of the year, where the student's year would end. And the end of the year becomes the time when students who are coming into kindergarten are assessed. So we do the assessment prior to them actually coming into the school. In the past, what we've done is we've had the assessments happen at the start of the school year. And teachers are trying to go offline, or they have a substitute, or we have somebody else from another school, maybe one of our itinerant staff members do the assessments. So this was something we've, we've been talking about now for two years. And we made this modification this year and we'll continue to do that.
So that makes sense for the end. How about the beginning? What's, what the one-day difference?
One-day differences at the beginning is just to bring them in slowly. So again, that's something that some of the schools have done where that first day is like a open house. So families bring their kids in, walk them around a little bit, they go home. The next day, they start for, they start for real. Thank you. I have Linda Woodland next.
I just have two questions about the calendar. One is, is it possible that we can put quarter marks, mark, you know, mark the quarters on like calendar? I think that would be useful for families to keep track of. And, and then also, I had asked you before, I didn't know if, if you've had time to give it any thought. Probably not. It was last minute. About if pre-K, if there's any reason to give the same kind of consideration for pre-K for doing those screenings, talking with the kindergarten teachers, that kind of thing? If there's any value there? That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, Linda, I did, I haven't had the opportunity to think about it because it was right before the meeting. So I will think about it.
Come on, five minutes before the meeting start isn't enough? Please.
I'll try. All right, I have Laura next.
Hi, thank you. I know that this year, there was a lot of unusual parts of the schedule, including the 10 days prior to students coming in to, to get teachers up and running and so forth. I do not see a day before the schools are in, the students are in, in session for teachers. And I, I know that that's common practice in other districts to have at least one day before. And I'm just wondering what the reason is for not having that here.
So that doesn't show up because this is the school calendar for when students start? So teachers would start the day before that?
Thank you.
Carl.
So maybe an unpopular question, since I know a lot of folks are looking to summer vacation already this year. But was there anything that prohibited us from like maybe starting our school year a week earlier? Taking, cutting a little bit back on maybe some summer loss that would be happening on top of, I know we've got remediation things planned over the summer, but that's not, I don't think everyone's going to partake in that. And it would seem that if there were, if this, if there were a year or two, shorten some of that summertime, even by a week, it might be this year. And I don't know if there, we had anything that prohibited us from like maybe starting the week of the 23rd of August, other than it being a little bit hotter, but.
In all honesty, Carl, it's probably, you know, when you think about it, most of our schools don't have air conditioning. Most of our classrooms don't have air conditioning. So the earlier we start, the more challenging it is for kids to kind of be in the school at that time. So that's one of the main reasons probably why. You know, also in terms of some of the things that are being offered up by DESE, acceleration academies and so forth, they're really looking for, you know, that last week of August, if possible. I don't know of any schools that start much earlier than, than the time that we're looking at. You know, typically we start school in the last week of August, the last couple of days prior to Labor Day. So yeah, I, we didn't really go into detail about that. We didn't really have very many discussions on that at all. Bob, did you want to jump in?
Darrell, was there something in the teacher's contract about how early we can start the year?
Yeah, I think it's, it, it might be a week before Labor Day.
It is. And that's what it says. And so Carl, we did look into that. This is about as early as we can start.
I just, because I know that some other districts are starting that, the 23rd of August that week. So it's not unheard of. So I just didn't know if that was, I mean, if there's language in the contract, then that adds a wrinkle to it that at least takes some flexibility out. But okay.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments, questions on the school calendar? Seeing none, I'll ask Randy to call the roll.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember? Member Kerschenbaum?
Kerschenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton abstained.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, no.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, no.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes. With the motion passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to recommend to the.
Chair Dennis, I have a question. So I only have, I have 11 yeses, two nos, and one abstained. That's still a passing vote? Considering, is it just majority? It's not quorum?
Well, it would be the majority, so long as we have a quorum here, it's a majority of the vote. Unless there's some type of special.
The vote I just gave you was who's on the call? Because we had a lot of folks drop off.
Right. So, so long as we still have a quorum, then we're still in session. And when we take our motions, if we have a majority vote, then the majority carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'm just going to entertain a motion to recommend to the full, wait a minute. So recommend to the full school committee a budget. So is this motion, I believe this motion should read to, to transfer, motion is to transfer $579,000 in salary and stipends appropriations to the benefits and assurance appropriations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't know if Ken or. I don't know if Ken or Dan want to give a brief.
I I can give you a brief explanation if that's okay, Dan, and you can follow up if I'm wrong. Just quickly, the the motion is to transfer money from stipends into benefits for a couple of reasons. One, we have money left in stipends, in in salaries and stipends because there are positions that we didn't hire this year. Moving it into benefits primarily because usually that we would use school choice to pay for benefits. We're trying to move school choice forward this year instead. So we need to find funds to to fill in for 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 school choice. And also, we're also trying to fill in something with school lunch revolving as as well for for benefits.
Spot on. Good student, Ken.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Randy.
Member Ayla?
Ayla, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember? Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes. That motion carries. Next is a motion to transfer $335,000 from salaries and stipends appropriation to other operating costs.
So moved.
Second.
And again, business finance discussed this. And Dan, if you're correct, I'm wrong. Basically, there was a change because we based our budget on the state budget before the world almost ended. And and then there was increase in charter school costs. And we have to make up for that. And again, we have unhired positions, et cetera. And that's why the money is coming from from that line. Is that fair, Dan?
Yes, it is.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Randy, can you call the roll?
Member Ayla?
Ayla, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember? Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes, motion passes. Next, a motion to transfer $40,000 from salaries and stipends appropriation to the people services appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
That's okay, briefly, business finance, again, Dan educated us, so not trying to speak on his behalf. But but basically, we're trying, their athletic revolving has a shortfall because of reduced revenue, ticket sales, et cetera. And we need to cover it out of the general fund. And that's what this transfer is primarily to do.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go to Randy.
Member Ayla?
Ayla, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember? Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes, so the motion carries. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. Without objection, I'm going to skip over the secretary's report and treasurer's report and go down to committee reports. Are there any subcommittee chairs who wish to give a subcommittee report?
Business finance can be very brief, if that's all right, Mike.
Go right ahead.
So we talked about those things. We talked about the end of the year report audit being pushed back. We talked about regional transportation reimbursement. We actually did get a payment. We talked about the imperativeness that we settle with VanPul, so we can deal with with that in in this year. And then we looked at various other 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 accounts. This budget transfer, we talked a lot about Medicaid and and the good work is being done there, I assume Soper and others in the office. And we also talked about the SR2 funds and projecting SR3 funds and how those might be used and distributed.
Thank you. Any questions for Ken on business finance? So we got something here. Okay, Adam, you want to see anything on business and finance? Thank you, Ken. Adam, you want to talk about facilities and security?
Yep, we met last week. It was a very exciting meeting. We had singing from David, laughing, even got some work. We did a review of the 10-year capital plan. And we hope to back to that and endorse it at our next meeting. You know, one of the key things in that plan is there's in there that straddle both sides of the cutoff of district versus town so that the towns can see what we're doing as part of the capital plan. And, you know, we're able to track both sides of that. We thought that was very important. We started a review of two different policies, 7113, which is facility usage for daycare programs, and 158, which is emergency evacuations. And for both of those, we also reviewed the current MASC and actually Lexington Public School policies that are out there. Facility use of daycares, we're actually looking at modifying three different policies that all interrelate, all about facility use by third parties. So we're we're going to go back, we're going to review those, and we'll probably actually get rid of this policy and roll any key parts of it into the other two, or just make one large policy. We plan to do that, look at that again at the next meeting. For the emergency evacuations, that one was a bit outdated compared to 7156, which is emergency response plan. So we'll probably end up rolling those together as well into a single policy. Again, it's been a rough year for us, so we're pretty excited to actually get the actual policy instead of the day-to-day stuff we've been doing at every single meeting. We got updated it on in-person learning, which we also got here today. And during the meeting, we definitely expressed our thanks to Spencer Reese Brookfield for lending us those desks for the school year or the remainder of the school year, and also recognize the hard work of the Wachusett staff that had to go and actually get all of those desks, got them back to our district and schools in a third of the time that it was originally planned for. So, you know, thank you to them for getting that done very quickly so that we could open. You know, then beyond that, we also talked about SR2 grant. And then we went into a brief executive session just to discuss some security measures. Any questions?
It looks like Sherry has a question for Adam.
Just a quick question. With all these desks that we've borrowed, it's fantastic. If we're in a situation where we still have to be spaced next year, do we have a plan?
Yeah, we'll actually buy more. So one of the things that we're doing is we're holding out. I don't want to purchase another 400 or 500 desks and then have, you know, them say, oh, guess what? You don't have to be, you don't have to be distanced anymore. So I'm trying to be conservative with that. We did buy more desks already, and we have more coming in for the high school. But at this time, we're going to wait to see how it kind of plays out.
Thank you. And then I had an update for diversity for Asama or Linda.
Yep, just a really quick one. We are continuing a policy review on, I think it's 6437. It's originally named discrimination, hate crimes, something along those lines. It's really a harassment policy. So we're going over and updating it to make it more in line where it's policy versus just versus a lot of procedure. So making it more user-friendly, I guess you could say. And we'll continue working on that tomorrow night as well.
Thank you. Any questions on diversity? Seeing none? So next item that we'll take is school council reports. Are there any school council reports that we feel need to be or want to be very much delivered tonight? Seeing none, we'll go into public hearing. Nobody signed up for the second public hearing. We'll go to new business MLA. You have something under new business for a future agenda?
I do, because we didn't really get to it tonight. I appreciated the enrollment information or prediction, projections that were in our superintendent's report. And I was hoping we could reserve some time to touch on that and perhaps the implications of that. I noticed a couple of trends, which I won't go into detail about right now, but would be concerning. So I hope that we could have an opportunity in a future agenda soon to discuss that and potential implications of that.
So Daryl, sounds like it's a topic for the superintendent's report on enrollment update and protections.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. Any other items underneath this? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, so we'll turn to Randy.
Member Ayla?
Ayla, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Ember, again. Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Knowlton?
Knowlton, yes.
Member Longbalil?
Longbalil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
A very hearty yes.
Chair Dennis?
Dennis, yes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good meeting.